Okay, good evening to you all, and I want to call this meeting of the Garner Town Council, which is usually our Monday meeting, but it's now our Tuesday meeting because of the holiday. So, welcome this evening. Thank you, Council, for being here. And we will begin this evening. I will call on Mr... well, excuse me, I will ask the clerk to call the roll to begin with, if you will, please, ma'am.
Mayor Marshburn.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Barringer.
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
And Councilmember Vance.
Here. Okay, just before we get into the next section of the meeting, let me... I think all of you are aware of this, but let me read to you our mask policy. It says, "Staff and audience members who are not fully vaccinated should wear, must wear, face coverings during council meetings. Fully vaccinated individuals are not required to wear masks. All persons should continue to practice social distancing when possible in council chambers." We would ask you to comply with that, if you will. Okay, I'm going to now recognize Councilmember Elmo Vance, who will lead us in our pledge of allegiance and also in our invocation. Mr. Vance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated.
I pray, "Spirit of a living God, we come to you again as humbly as we know how seeking out your wisdom and guidance says. We attempt to do the will of the people, God. We ask that you got our minds and our hearts to be focused on those things that'll be pleasing in your sight and give us the strength and courage to do those things which are difficult and give us the ability to discern what we can and cannot do. God, we ask that you be with all those individuals who've gathered here for such a time as this. We ask that you allow them to be able to stand firm and focus on those things which are important in their lives and speak truth to all those who need to hear. Father, we thank you for the health and strength you provided to us. We thank you for providing us... providing a way for us throughout this pandemic and clearing the way so that we can reach back to a new normal, a new normal where we can move forward confidently knowing that we serve a God who can do all things that have failed. Father, we thank you for all that you've done and all that you continue to do for us, and in your most precious name, Jesus Christ's name, I pray and we say..."
Amen. Okay, thank you, Mr. Vance. The first portion of our meeting always is what we call petitions and comments. This portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items that are not included on the agenda. The council is interested in hearing your concerns, but may not take action or deliberate on subject matter brought to the attention of the council during petitions and comments. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. And we do ask if you desire to make comments or petitions that you try to limit your time to about three minutes in order to expedite the process of our meeting. We also sometimes ask people to sign up, but I don't have a list of anyone who has signed up in advance. So, Ms. Clerk, are you aware of anybody?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who came tonight desiring to make a comment of any kind? And by the way, you'll have an opportunity... if you came for one of the public hearings, obviously, you'll be recognized during that time. Okay? You okay? All right. All right, so, hearing none. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the adoption of the agenda. Council, what is your pleasure?
Will we adopt the agenda as presented?
Sackett.
Okay. Motion made and properly sacketted. Thank you very much. All in favor of adoption of the agenda, please vote aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no, and there is none. Thank you very much. Presentations. I don't have any listed on my agenda. Are there any presentations this evening that anyone is aware of? No. Okay, thank you. All right, the next item is our consent agenda, which tonight contains three items. I believe all council members are aware of those, so unless a council member needs to pull an item, I will entertain a motion at this time for passage of the consent agenda. Okay, a motion properly made and sacketted. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please vote aye. If there's opposition, please vote no, and there is none. Okay, we will go into the section of our agenda under public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening. Let me give you some preliminary information regarding this hearing. This will be a quasi-judicial hearing. All persons who wish to provide testimony under state law must be sworn in prior to giving testimony. Under state law, the parties are entitled to a fair hearing. And so, at this point, I will ask, Council, do any council members have a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change, or have you had any ex parte communications, have any close familial, business, or other association relationships with an affected person, or have a financial interest in the outcome? If any of those things apply, would you indicate that at this time?
On the first item?
Yes.
Yes, I've got received some emails from Mr. Chuck Hindle, 305 Tiffany Circle, in regards to some of my issues he had with the sewer connection back there at the pump station close to Tiffany Woods.
Okay. Any other council members receive that? As mayor, I will acknowledge that I think I received the same email that you did, Mr. Singleton, sure enough. Anybody else?
I do, personally.
Okay. I will ask both of you if the information you received, ex parte, will in any way influence your consideration of the manner of this evening and in any way interfere with your unbiased ability to listen and hear the information and vote accordingly? Okay. All right. All right, this will be a fact-finding hearing, and only competent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive is allowed. Only expert witnesses based on training experience may testify as to impacts on property values, traffic safety, or noise levels. Council members are not... excuse me, are only allowed to receive factual information during this hearing and are not allowed to discuss the case outside of this hearing. So, at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing, SUP 2001 Garner Main EMS Station. And let's see, I believe we need to swear our witnesses before we hear any testimony. So, those of you who expect to testify in this hearing, if you will, approach the clerk in the back corner back there and be sworn, please.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just to clarify for any members of the public who are here, if you wish to speak or ask questions, you should be sworn in as well to participate in the proceeding.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Attorney.
Okay, so I'm just gonna hold off till everybody gets here. Good gracious. Okay, so I guess we just start in line and everybody sign in? Do you have it already? Everybody signed in? Yes? Okay. Ready your right hand, please. Do you solemnly, sincerely, truly declare and affirm that the evidence you provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you all for complying with that. And now, I will recognize our town staff member from... excuse me, staff member from the planning department, Ms. Stacy Griffin, for her presentation. Good afternoon.
I'm back here. I know.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm shorter than the monitor, so sorry about that.
I understand.
Good evening. You do have before you tonight the Garner Main EMS Station Special Use Permit Request, SUP SP 2001. The applicant in this case is the Wake County government. The property is owned by the Wake County Board of Education. The address for that property is currently 1601 Timber Drive, and the tract size for the EMS station is 3.96 acres. The proposed use is an ambulance service or rescue squad, which is how it's categorized in our Unified Development Ordinance, and the current zoning is residential 40 or R40. You see the setbacks there before you. The neighborhood meeting for this project was held remotely on Zoom on December 1st, 2020, in accordance with the Town Council provision on remote neighborhood meetings that was in place at that time due to COVID-19. There were three property owners in attendance, two of which were in the notification area, and one who was not within that radius. A detailed list of questions and answers is provided in your staff report. There you see the site plan before you. This property will... project will front on Thompson Road, and you see the existing school driveway there, as well as the dedicated driveway for the ambulance service rescue squad. There are six ambulance bays in the middle, stormwater, constructed wetland in the back, and you see that there is a sewer easement down at the bottom of your screen, so... and the forced main going to the sewer outfall there. And then, of course, to the north on this screen would be Timber Drive Elementary. These are renderings of what the building will look like. Parkland and open space are not required for non-residential development, so there was none required in this case. For landscape and buffer requirements, there, the required percent is 10% for non-residential development. They have preserved 10%, and it will ultimately exceed 10% due to the additional plantings that they are adding. The perimeter buffers that you see there, 15 feet to the north and 35 feet to the west and to the south, based on the adjacent uses. There's a 15-foot street buffer along both Thompson Road and along the internal driveway that's shared with the school, and there are street trees approximately every 40 feet, as required by the UDO, along those streets. Street lighting has been shown in conformance with the UDO, as well as meeting staff recommendations for LED fixtures. All fixtures have zero uplight, low glare, and a warm white light exhibiting a color temperature of no more than 4,000 Kelvin. For parking, the ratio for ambulance services or rescue squad is based on one space per 200 feet of floor area. In this case, it was calculated based on 8,100 square feet, which is the area of the building, not including the six ambulance bays. So, there's 41 required spaces, and they have provided 41 spaces. The inspections Department, together with the Fire Department, has reviewed and preliminarily approved this site plan. There is a jurisdictional stream that runs parallel to the northern boundary of the site, with the buffer zone encroaching into the site. The buffer will be preserved, other than necessary utility work and the supplemental plantings. For stormwater, the EMS station is a commercial development site that's located within the watershed protection area. The site is subject to water quality requirements for 85% TSS and nitrogen, as well as quantity requirements for the 1, 10, and 25-year storm events. A stormwater wetland that is in the rear of the property is proposed to treat impervious surface for the 85% TSS, nitrogen, and the quantity requirements to ensure that those stormwater requirements are met, and a nitrogen offset payment will be required. The parcels will be connected to the City of Raleigh Public Water and Sewer Systems. Sewage will be pumped to the 15-inch sewer outfall just beyond the southwest corner of the school property. For infrastructure, Thompson Road is already built to its ultimate section along the western margin with curb gutter and sidewalk. Therefore, no additional frontage improvements were required for the site. The main access to the site will be through a dedicated driveway on Thompson Road, south of the existing school driveway. That secondary access will be the shared driveway with the school. After sufficient review and plan revision, staff does find that this project, as now proposed, may be considered consistent with the regulations of the Unified Development Ordinance, so long as the following project-specific conditions are met. Prior to receipt of approved plans, payment of engineering inspection fee shall be paid to the town of Garner. Prior to issuance of a building permit, payment of public utilities fees shall be paid to the City of Raleigh. Prior to issuance of a building permit, a nitrogen offset payment is required. Prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the Stormwater Control Measures Maintenance Plan and associated memorandum of agreement shall be approved and recorded with the Wake County Register of Deeds. You have before you the recommended motion, and the worksheet is beginning on page 25 of your agenda packet, for the motion to approve or deny SUP SP 2001 Garner Main EMS Station. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here as well.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Griffin, for your presentation. Council, I will ask each of you if you have questions of Ms. Griffin, and I'll start on my left with Mr. Matthews.
No, sir, not this time.
Okay. Mr. Singleton?
No, sir, not this time.
Ms. Barringer? None? Okay. And Mr. Dellinger?
Quick question on the southern buffer. Is... I can't really tell from the site plan. Is there proposed to be additional screening or anything on that southern part of the property?
They are putting a fence there as well, and I'd have to go back and look at the planting plan, but if they're using existing plantings, it will have to be supplemented to ensure that the UDO requirements are met. I don't have those calculations with me right here, so...
Thank you.
I believe there's a small berm there, too, but I'll let them... the applicant confirm that when they stand up.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dellinger. Mr. Vance?
Yes, do you foresee any problems with permitting of the projects, since it's so close to the new sewer buffer stream?
No, sir. Engineering has not indicated that there would be any issues there.
Okay, data from Council for Ms. Griffin. Okay, anybody else from planning, planning to... planning, planning to...
Not at this time.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, I'll be happy to hear from the applicant at this time, and those of you who are planning to testify. When you come to the podium, you can come to this one. Most people go to the middle one. If you will, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Ken Murphy. I am deputy Wake County attorney with the Wake County Attorney's Office. My address is 2316 Filigree Court, Raleigh, North Carolina, and I'm pleased to be before you tonight, representing Wake County and its request for a special use permit to construct a new EMS station to serve the citizens of Garner. This proposed EMS station will be built on an approximately four-acre site located at the intersection of Timber Drive and Thompson Road, as you just heard in the staff report. Wake County will lease this site, which is part of the Timber Drive Elementary School parcel from the Wake County Public School System, which will save the taxpayers of Garner and Wake County money. The proposed new EMS station will help meet the growing demand for EMS services in and around Garner. The proposed EMS station will bring expanded services to Garner that will directly improve the public health and safety of the area. The proposed new EMS station will be built to accommodate future growth over the coming decades without an additional cost to taxpayers for future construction projects. And quite simply, this new EMS station is good for Wake County, it's good for Garner, and it's good for the community in which the EMS station will be located. And it's on that basis that Wake County respectfully asks this council to consider and approve the special use permit for this project. Now, I have with me several folks from Wake County and consultants engaged by Wake County who have been instrumental in the planning, design, and operation of this proposed new EMS station, and I'd like to just take a brief moment to introduce them to you all. I have with me John Olson and Larry McMillan from Wake County EMS. Mr. Olson is deputy director and chief of support services for Wake County EMS. Mr. McMillan is the chief compliance officer for Wake County EMS. I have Rich Kirkland, an MAI and North Carolina certified real property appraiser from Kirkland Appraisals. I have Zach Pierce from CLH Designs... or excuse me, CLH Design, the project's landscape architect. Mike Esposito from ADW Architects is the project's architect. Steve Miller, also from CLH Design, is the project's civil engineer. Betty Parker, senior real estate services... senior director for real estate services for the Wake County Public Schools. Tommy Mormon, Wake County Facilities Design and Construction, is the project manager for this project. Now, several of these individuals will speak directly to you all tonight about the proposed project. All of them are under oath and available to answer any questions that you may have about this project. And each of them will speak to the... or collectively, they will all speak to the eight required findings that this council must make to approve the county's special use permit request. And I'd like to call John Olson as the county's first witness on this special use permit application request.
And again, let me... thank you, Mr. Murphy. Let me suggest that as each witness comes forward, I'm sure they'll identify themselves, but speak as concisely and expeditiously as you can. We obviously have several witnesses and others that want to speak, so... but we want to give you a thorough here. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, my name is Jonathan Olson. I reside at 115 Maddick Street in the town of Wendell. I'm here this evening representing the Wake County Department of EMS. As Ken mentioned, I am the deputy director and the chief of support services, and EMS stations and facilities is one of the many projects that falls under my responsibility umbrella. To meet the growing demand for EMS service in and around the town of Garner, it is necessary for EMS to expand from our current co-located site with the Garner Fire Department. They have been wonderful partners of ours for well over a decade now, and growth and demand within this community exceeds the space that they can allot us to work out of their stations. The location of this station was selected within a zone that data has indicated and supported to allow us to meet both a large percentage of the population of the town of Garner in this community, the recent and projected future call volume that we've seen within this community, and to allow us access to traffic corridors so that we can expeditiously get to adjoining areas of this community. The station and its expanded service will bring to Garner community and will allow us to directly improve both the public safety and public health of your town. The station prototype is larger than our standard programming to allow for extended support capabilities and intended to minimize the time that ambulances are out of this area for necessary tasks that today often takes them to Raleigh. Keeping ambulances where they are needed is our objective, and having room for growth to meet the future need of this community is our objective. The station will give us room to expand our deployment in Garner over the coming decades without additional costs to the taxpayers for additional stations. It is on that premise that we require the additional parking that you saw today to accommodate on-duty staff well into the future. The station was purposely oriented to direct any lights and sirens from emergency vehicles leaving to the north on Thompson Road towards the already busy Timber Drive Corridor, which, if you've been out there recently, is busy with fire and EMS units coming from the current station that's on the other side of the elementary school. And it's oddly unlikely that every call in Garner will initiate from this building. As you may know, we use GPS technology in Wake County to recommend and dispatch the closest unit, GPS-wise, to every emergency in the county, and do not expect that every call in Garner would initiate from this building. Very likely... more likely than not, units never make it back to their station before they get dispatched to the next call. Traffic congestion generated by the school next door will only present a possible impact for a few hours of every weekday, and the traffic flow pattern coming into the school on Thompson Road is fortunately against the direction that we will be going getting out of there. We do anticipate there being traffic congestion at the intersection of Timber and Thompson Road, but that's something we're good at. We navigate intersections responding to emergency traffic over 1,000 times every day in Wake County. Fortunately, the vast majority of those times are without any incident. So, it is our mission statement at Wake County EMS to provide prompt, compassionate, clinically excellent care wherever and whenever it's needed. This facility will ensure our ability to meet this mission in your community for many years to come, and we would appreciate your support on moving forward with this project. Thank you.
Mr. Olson, for you sitting down. Let me see if Council has any questions for you, sir. And so, I'll start on this side. Any... Mr. Vance? Mr. Dellinger?
Just one... one question.
Yes, sir.
What is the protocol for using sirens and things in time of day? I know that's the first thing people probably think about.
The vast majority of our dispatches are what we call emergency dispatches. We do have non-emergency dispatches. Usually, by the time the telecommunicator that's working through a logic program to make that determination, we're already on the way to that call. I will tell you that we will make sure, and as we do now, I would doubt that you would hear a siren before they would come up to the intersection at Timber Drive. As just general courtesy in the way that we operate, we have other stations around the county that are... that are in mixed-use types of neighborhoods, and I would not anticipate at least sound coming from that vehicle before they approach that first intersection to make their way safely into traffic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Barringer, anything? Singleton? Matthews? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll hear from your next witness.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the county would call Rich Kirkland. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Kirkland has prepared an impact analysis report in conjunction with his testimony. Can I approach and hand up copies of that report for the council?
I think that would be sufficient, or if you want to give them to our attorney, she can expedite that.
Mr. Mayor, with your permission, I would like to ask Mr. Kirkland just a couple of brief questions, and let him take it from there.
Sure. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Kirkland.
Good evening.
Could you state your name and your business address for the council, please?
Richard Kirkland, 9408 Northfield Court, Raleigh, North Carolina, 27603.
And how are you employed?
I'm a commercial appraiser for Kirkland Appraisals.
And were you engaged by Wake County to perform services in connection with the project that is before the council this evening?
I was.
Okay, and can you explain to the council what you were asked to do and what you, in fact, did on this project?
Sure. I was asked to do an impact analysis for the proposed facility to see if it has any impact on adjoining property values. I do impact analysis for a wide range of different property types, and it's a common approach that we do in my business. The appropriate method that we use is called a matched pair analysis or a paired sales analysis. And should I... is it okay to pull this down to speed?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
We usually prefer...
I'm trying to... I'm trying to work with your rules.
Sure.
But... so, a paired sales analysis is what... it's very straightforward. You look at a property that's next to what you're testing for, a home that's sold next to an EMS station or something similar, and then you compare it to similar homes that are nearby that are not adjoining that to see if there's any impact on property value. I've looked at... I've looked at, as you can see in the impact study, I looked at two different EMS, or one's an EMS slash fire station site, and I also looked at three fire station sites as a similar use. Looked at for adjoining sales. Many of those examples that I show, you can see, I explain why I can't do any matched pairs at those locations. I can't analyze anything unless there's a home sale to look at. But we were able to pull up four matched pairs for us to analyze and see if there's any impact on property value. Looked at homes ranging from $275,000 up to about $570,000. And again, based on the proximity to those fire stations, those EMS stations, we found no impact on property values. They're selling for the same, very similar price per square foot as other properties that are nearby that are not adjoining those stations. And again, they were, we looked at properties also where they were similar proximity. We measured how close those adjoining homes are to those EMS stations or fire stations, compared them to that, and we're seeing a very similar range. When you look at even the homes that haven't sold that we looked at, they're in a similar proximity of about 170 feet between the closest point of the house to the closest point of those stations. So this is a very typical layout and what I'd see across the county really for this type of use. So it's therefore my professional opinion this will have no impact on adjoining property values, and that this is a harmonious location as built as designed. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, council, questions for this witness? Miss Baringer, name, Mr. Singleton, Matthews? Okay, Mr. Dillinger and Mr. Vance. Okay, thank you very much. We may get back to you a little later, but for now, no questions. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I would ask that Mr. Kirkland's impact analysis report be accepted into the record in this matter at this time?
I believe that would be satisfactory, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The county, next we call Zach Pierce.
And by, by the way, as you're, as you're coming up to speak, feel free to, to lower your mask when you're, when you're testifying. We can hear you just a little bit better, I think. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Zach Pierce, landscape architect with CLH Design, a registered landscape architect in the state of North Carolina. I was at 105 Hartness, Holly Springs. I appear to talk to about, that I've, my professional opinion, the development will comply with all requirements of the ordinance. Stacy went over the requirements and show we are meeting them. We are going above and beyond in two instances, and that's on the south side property line. We are providing a six-foot tall privacy fence along the back of curb. On the north side of the landscape buffer that you see there. We also have a three-to-four-foot tall berm that the plantings will be planted on to further be the good, be the good neighbor. It's my professional opinion that the proposed use is consistent with the town's transportation plans and other plans and policies, and is consistent, and its use in, is in the harmony with the intent of the UDO. I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, council, rather than calling you individually, if you have a question for this witness, let it be known. Anybody? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Pierce. Okay, Mr. Murphy, who else do we have?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next, we have Mike Esposito.
My name is Mike Esposito, and I'm with ADW Architects in Charlotte, North Carolina, and I just wanted to speak to the design of the building. Since the building is residential in nature, we have used traditional materials such as brick, as you can see, lap siding in certain areas to give it more of a residential feel. We have sloped roofs with gables, and we've tried to keep the scale of the building at a residential size. Again, we feel that this building will fit very well with the school and the neighborhood, as you can see, and we think it's going to be a nice complement to the town of Garner.
Okay, thank you, sir. Questions for Mr. Esposito? Anybody? No? Okay, thank you, sir.
The county's next witness is Steve Miller.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Steve Miller. I'm Vice President of CLH Design. I'm the project's civil engineer of record. I'm a 24-year practicing engineer in the state of North Carolina. My work address is 400 Regency Forest Drive in Cary. I'm here to address impact mitigation. I will say that Stacy stole most of my thunder, so I don't want to repeat everything she said. The items that I had identified maybe of interest were site lighting that Stacy, I think, admirably addressed, that we are meeting the town's code. The lighting has been designed and will be leased from Duke Energy. They're very familiar with doing site lighting and complying with the town of Garner's requirements. I want to talk about clearing, clearing of trees on the site, because I think we would have an impact with that. The site disturbance, limits of disturbance is about three acres. That's how much ground we're going to disturb when we build this facility. Only about half of that is currently wooded, so the site that is selected on this school campus is one of the remaining unwooded areas that's not already being used by the school. So we're trying to minimize the, the impact to the wooded coverage of the site. Stream buffers, again, Stacy hit on those. There are stream buffers along our north property line and far to the west. We are avoiding impacting the primary inner zone of those. We have minor impacts to the outer zone, which are allowed and only as necessary to connect our utilities and to dissipate the stormwater flow from our constructed wetland. Regarding stormwater, that's in the purview of my design. We are proposing a constructed stormwater wetland. It's the biggest feature on the west or the rear side of the site. That pond will meet the town's requirements for water quality and retaining flood storage, so we're not, we're going to be releasing water from our site at rates that are actually less than what's happening right now. And I think, I don't want to, I know you guys got a long agenda in front of you, so I'd be here for questions regarding that.
Okay, let me see if we have questions now. Mr. Singleton?
Yes, Mr. Miller, I have the emails I received from Mr. Heindl. Tiffany Woods had specific questions, I think Stace forwarded to you. A lot of concern they have there, some issues they've had with some flooding back there near the pump station, and they wanted to know whether the sewer line is planned to cross Buck Branch due to the fact they had some drain tile that they installed to help get rid of some of the flooding they've had over the years. And so their concern was, is that connection, is it cross Buck Branch, would it go through some of that drain truck, would it go across some of that drain tile?
I did get that email, and we will offer to meet that property owner at his site to verify where those drain tiles are located. They were not picked up on our survey. On the, I don't know if, I guess you guys can see that plan on your screens in front of you, but that green line running along the bottom of the site is the route of the force main. We're anticipating this to be a two-inch, very small force main. This, as John talked about earlier, there's few people actually in this building, so we're going to generate a very small amount of sewage. But we still need to get it to the City of Raleigh pump station, which is across Buck Branch. In order to do that and avoid impacting the wetlands in that area and the stream itself, we are going to pump and we are going directional bore install that force main. So we're not going to be digging to install it. We're going to drill it underneath the wetlands, underneath the stream, come up on the other side. At that point, we will have to dig the last 20 feet or so to connect into the existing manhole. Where we will be digging over there will be inside town of Garner property that used to be the pump station. That doesn't mean the homeowner did not put that storm pipe in town property, and we have no problem. I don't think we'll be able to move our route, but if we do, if we do anticipate impacting it, we can put on our drawings for the contractor to repair it. It sounded to me from the email that that drain pipe was something in the range of a four-inch pipe or six-inch pipe, so obviously something very easy that a contractor could put back to maintain that drainage.
So you're going to be bored under Buck Branch, and only once you get on the other side, you're remaining 20 feet or so to connect to the pump station?
Right. Yes, we do have to at that point switch from a force main to a gravity pipe to the last 20 feet or so, and that needs to be installed with a trench.
Right.
Equipment. Our intention, we don't have a contractor on board yet, obviously, we're good ways from that, but likely access that area down the easement and not trudge equipment across the stream. So we're hoping to leave that wetland and stream completely untouched.
Okay. There may be some residents over there who are, have had questions to ask, so I'll wait and see, but I appreciate your answer so far. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Matthews, anything? Okay, this way for Mr. Dillinger, Mr. Vance. Okay, possibly as Mr. Singleton said, may have some questions later on, but thank you for now, for your.
Okay, I'm also here to address number seven.
Oh, excuse me, okay.
Adequate public safety and transportation and utility facilities. Where I figure that comes into play is how this facility will impact the sewer and water capacities of the existing utilities. As you know, City of Raleigh is part of the site plan review process, and they reviewed our plans. We expect to have, as I mentioned about the sewer, a very minimal impact against capacity of the City of Raleigh sewer system. As far as water is concerned, we did a fire hydrant flow test of the fire hydrant right in front of our building, or our proposed building, and we've got adequate water supply there for a fire flow if the building were to catch on fire. But our domestic water and sewer demands, we expect to be very, very low. There will not be anybody housed overnight at this facility, so, and if you have more questions about that, John might be able to expand on that a little bit more. Let's see, so that, as far as impact on.
Okay, any council have questions on this latter issue? Okay?
I think Ken, I'm staying for one more. Maintenance? The last finding of fact addresses assurance of continued maintenance. I think what I can address here is the maintenance of the, the constructed stormwater wetland. That is obviously something that's going to be there for the life of this building. It's be, it's installed there to treat and control stormwater runoff, and its regular maintenance is imperative for it to operate properly. We do develop an operation and maintenance plan for that. The county will perform regular maintenance on it to ensure that it's functioning properly. And I, my understanding is the town does annual inspections as well. If the town finds that it is not being maintained, they have mechanisms to encourage Wake County to perform those maintenance operations, or I believe the town has the ability to do them themselves and then charge Wake County. But I think we can all agree, Wake County is obviously set up for managing properties that they own all across the county and all of our municipalities. As far as maintenance of the building, I don't know if I can mention that, but I think we just have to look if there's any questions about maintenance, but I feel comfortable, in my professional opinion, that Wake County is perfectly capable of maintaining this building and.
Okay. Questions about maintenance? Anyone? Okay, none? Thank you, sir.
Okay, last but certainly not least, for our final witness, the county would call Betty Parker from the Wake County Public Schools.
Good evening, Ms. Parker.
It's nice to be here with you. I'm Betty Parker, 3100 Wake tough court, Raleigh and C27606. For 15 and a half years, it's been my pleasure to be the Senior Director of Real Estate Services with the Wake County Board of Education. For 19 of those, I've been a licensed real estate broker with the North Carolina Real Estate Commission, and for a little more than 32, a licensed attorney with the North Carolina State Bar here in North Carolina. I say all that because part of my obligation and duty is to manage the lease holdings for the Wake County Board of Education. The county approached us for a lease of the land for the site that you see before you in order to accommodate the EMS needs of the community in this area. We understand that Garner's needs were growing on the northern end of the site, which has driven a greater need on the southern end of our site. I can't think of a school site that's better located to be safer, so we're, we're happy to accommodate them. We've partnered with the, with the town and county before and are glad to be of assistance here. In terms of maintenance responsibilities, it is part of our standard lease agreement. There are maintenance obligations and burdens placed upon the county, and in our experience, their General Services Administration Group has been exemplary in discharging those. So we're, we're confident that maintenance will be something that not only are they able to do, but they will be obligated to do to the Board of Education. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, Ms. Parker, any questions on this side over here? None? None? Okay, over here?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation, okay. Is there anyone else, Mr. Murphy, that you have that you were going to call on to testify?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor, there's not.
Okay, all right. At this point, I will hear from those persons who are here this evening who may want to speak on this issue, either pro or con, I suppose, so I don't think we have any particular order as to who would go first, but I'll recognize anyone. I'm looking on this side because I believe this is where most of you are seated. So whoever would like to come and address the council regarding your comments, now would be the time to do that. Just let us know who you are and your address, sir.
Hello, my name is Adrian Johnson. I live at 803 Thompson and also own the property at 110 Smith's Lane. I'll be the only property owner of Jason's EMS station, and I know it's a done deal, that there's not a chance for us to, to get y'all to stop doing this, but I do have a few questions. When meeting with the folks, it seems like the berm is getting smaller, getting shorter, and getting less wide. They said it was going to be 40 feet, now it's 35. Supposed to be six feet, now it's three, three to four. It seems like what he told us in the beginning is all, is out the window, they're just going to get away, what they want to get away with. It's obviously not an intersection. It's on a residential street. Everybody knows that. Sirens, they're coming at that thing. I don't blame them. I'd be hitting the siren too. They're going to hit the timber. I feel worse for the people right across from Timber in that subdivision up there. They're going to get nailed every, every time. We could hear them coming down, you know they're going to, they're going to kill us. We built a nice home in Garner. We're from Garner. I was raised in Garner. Mayor Marshman, I see you in the park, you know, walk there every day. That's why we build on Timber, proximity to the park. It just seems like that our, that our home is, is being sacrificed, and I know a lot of this stuff is done to, to codify us, make us happy, whatever, but it's not going to make us happy, you know, with a two-acre mosquito pit in our backyard. When we first bought that property, the land that was, there was a mobile home there, and there was a 15-foot driveway going down, and we asked to buy, people of Wake County. I, I want to know what happened to, we can't sell you 15 feet of land because the school needs it for impervious land in case they expand the school. Now the school's taking four acres of land and covered it when it was, could not be used. So does that mean Timber Drive can't possibly be expanded now because all the impervious land is used up? I know 15 feet by 100 feet couldn't be sold four years ago. Something happened between now and four years ago. That's, that's kind of odd, but I, I don't think it's going to change anybody's mind. I know Garner needs an EMS station. I can think of 100 better places for it. I know these folks have picked my backyard or my side yard for it. I offered to buy. I offered to buy the property years ago, couldn't be sold. Right beside the fire station now, there's a, there's a wide open lot between there and the school. Shared the same parking lot with the existing fire station. There's a, up there in the corner, the old CVS station, whichever one went out of business, wide open. That could be redone, but I understand they're getting this for a dollar or for 50 years or whatever. It just kills us. You know, we built our retirement home there. Spencer's in the same situation. We're living right up next to it. My daughter built beside us, and we want to have a monstrosity right beside us. I mean, I don't know what to say. We're the, we're the recipients of the lower property value, 170 feet. This thing's going to be 60 feet from us, you know? And like I said, I saw 35 feet when they were meeting with us and it was 40 feet, you know, three of them. I'd go, you know where I feel about this.
Does anyone want to comment, ask a question?
Well, that's no problem.
I was going to see if council wanted to ask you any questions or confer further. Anybody? No, not at this time, I guess.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson.
Brings barrier, winding.
Okay.
I'm William Spence, known as Bill Spence at 120 Spence Lane, and I've been a citizen here for maybe 23 years and seventh-generation Garner citizen. And we're just, just past the Johnsons. Number one, we, we feel really bad for the Johnsons. It's a bad situation. It's a little less for us, but it'll be noisy. My wife has sleeping problems. We already hear the fire trucks, but they're a little further away. They're going to be just two doors away. Number, also, it's been R-40 for all these years, and when we built, it was a residential, residential neighborhood, and so were the Johnsons. I know the council can change it, but I mean, we need the ambulance service, obviously. It just needs to be in the right place. There's a lot of power here with this consultant, the professional consultants, and it's overwhelming against just the two of us, but I hope that the council will consider it. I know that, I know Ken and the council members, I know all of you, mostly because I read your, when you campaigned, I know you care a lot about citizens. So, I have another concern here. When I received the letter here, it said that, I think it's misleading, it says that sworn testimony, now, that's overending, so, but then it said competent professional evidence. So, I'm not a professional, so I'm not presenting evidence, and I can ask a question, but I know all of you, the council, they care a lot about what a citizen has to say and how, and if there's enough people, they can influence you to make these kind of decisions. I think this letter, this letter does not say that we can, as a citizen, can influence the council. I know maybe just one or two, maybe it won't change the decision. If you had several thousand people like this, you could come and make something happen. So, my question really is, can a town citizen just come up and give an opinion? I don't mind being sworn, but can a person be sworn and just give you my opinion and you can be, you can influence that decision?
I may refer your question to the town attorney, but I think the quick answer is, yeah, a town citizen can come in and speak to the issue at hand, and the council has to weigh information that comes before, before it, as we noted in the quasi-judicial hearing manner, but.
Yes.
Mr. Attorney, would you answer that?
The quasi-judicial proceeding that you have before you requires that you make your decision based on competent evidence, and the state legislature has defined what competent evidence is and is not, and in some cases, laypeople such as citizens can make public comments but cannot present evidence on property values, vehicular traffic or traffic engineering, and then other matters to which generally only expert testimony is, would be admissible in a court under the rules of evidence. So, that tends to be engineering, architecture disciplines that require professional licensing and degree. So, while they can provide some information and observations about the area, the council may only consider competent evidence in rendering a decision in this case.
Okay, sir. That's my answer via our attorney, I guess I should say. I'm not trying to be.
Yeah, well, that's a little confusing, too. I know the mayor and the council members, I know they care about the, what the citizens want to say. I know they do, but according to the state law, it doesn't make any difference, doesn't. So, it's my waste, I'm wasting my time. I mean, there's like three kinds of people. Some people make things happen, some people watch things happen, some people wonder what's happening. I guess that I'm, I guess we're just in the second two categories. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Spence.
Yeah, it's very confusing. I still haven't gotten an answer. I have a legal opinion, but it's, it's not black and white, yes or no, to me. My wife was just asking if we had a petition with 10,000 signatures. Would that influence Garner Town Council?
Mayor?
Yeah.
Mr. Spence, this property, you're correct, is zoned R-40.
Yes, sir.
But based off our UDO, and if Mr. Treasor will, or Mr. Banfield will confirm, this is an allowed use in that zoning.
Yes, sir.
And so, it's an allowed use. So, yes, you could get 10,000 signatures and the town could turn it down, but because of case, state law and case precedent, they would sue us, a judge would issue the order and say, do it.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I can only watch what you guys are having, and thank you, and I know you're doing a good job, so, but I won't be here anymore because it's just wasting everybody's time. I can come to observe, but I don't need to just make any, any citizen comments. Thank you.
I hear your frustration, Mr. Spence, but I would say to you, you're welcome to come here anytime. I understand the points you're making.
You're very good people, and you're good listeners, and you care about us about this law.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is very strange.
Yeah, and thank you, Ms. Singleton, for clarifying. As you can imagine, we obviously are all sworn, when we were sworn in as council members to comply with the law, and so that's.
Yes, of course.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not complaining. I guess I'm complaining about this law.
Yeah. Okay, sir. All right, anyone else care to speak at this time? Okay, would you come to the podium, please?
Kathleen Abbey. Yes, like Mr. Spence, I formed the impression that was, that was not positive. It seemed almost as though we receive these letters and the circumstances are so strict, you start to wonder if maybe there isn't an effort to squash free speech among the people who might disagree with a suggestion from the planning department. I want to offer one other thing about this expert witness, since I also got involved with this on a BOA meeting a few weeks ago when someone said I couldn't talk at all because I wasn't a certified combustion specialist. I think it, we have to look at what the person, what evidence we really need. For example, it seems to me that if I would say, on November 12th, we had four inches of rain, because I looked it up in the NOAA database on the internet, a government database, would you all agree we had a lot of rain, because I want to show you what happened with that, that I wouldn't have to bring in a certified meteorologist to interpret the NOAA database to say that when it said four inches of rain in that box, that that really was four inches of rain, that I can read a graph. It says that there was two hours where it's two inches fell, there was a break and two hours more to go on to show you something. It seems to me if I were to talk about some damage that had been done to my property, I would really have to have a certified expert witness, and I believe that that would be very appropriate. I think some things we are able to do, we are able to say, we read in the newspaper this happened, or we read the NOAA base, database, I have a stormwater manual with me, this thing. I can probably program on a computer every single equation that's there showing what affects storm flow rate, but I know that I don't know anything about how to mitigate it on a practical basis. I don't know which drains are best, and that's where I would think you'd say you'd have to have an expert if I got up and said, okay, I think on that thing there, you should have a French drain here and another kind of drain other there. So, that's, it seems to me that quasi-dujillo also refers to the type of evidence, how strong it should be, preponderance over absolutely certain, and I just offer that as maybe a thought rather than implying to everybody we can't get up and say anything because it might disagree with what the planning office is going to suggest. Okay, on the issue, sorry to take so much time, but.
If you can kind of move it along pretty quickly. Go ahead.
Okay. I still wondered when I see this big stand of, wide stand of trees behind the fire department station, the volunteer fire department station, why this nice design wasn't incorporated there. I know you might have to, if you take off trees, you'll have to put some drains in and do some things about the water, but you already have signs on Vandoor Springs telling you not to park, you know, stop and block the traffic so that if, and this happens, sometimes there's your, it's a red light, all of a sudden the sign goes on and there's the fire truck needs to go somewhere. In our, in my opinion, I'm wondering why that site really wasn't looked at to enlarge. You could put a light even on Vandoor Springs Road when there's a call. Somebody could push a button and the traffic would be stopped. Yes, it would hold us up a little bit, but I have seen Timber Drive Elementary School in the morning and in the afternoon, and recently, there have been a lowered speed limit, which, and the rationale was because of children having to cross Timber Drive. By the, where this is located now, after school, children walking will have to pass through the Timber Drive driveway. They'll have to pass, then they might cross Thompson Drive to get to the other side to take a crosswalk to go across Timber to the other side. So, there's three sites there where they would, might intersect a vehicle going out on emission. So, my other question was, well, is this a 24/7 station? Maybe you would only use it when it wasn't school hours. Maybe there's some coordination. Maybe this was going to be a call center. So, I just was, as the people here have said, we haven't talked, I don't know them, I've seen them for the first time. It sounds like it's a done deal, but I'm a little surprised that some of these other concerns weren't there. Another reason I actually substitute taught in the public schools. I have, I can tell you a very funny incident about one day when a couple of teachers got sick, there were only substitute teachers on the playground. One child goes over and is playing on concrete, and the kids come over and they say, the regular teacher told them not to play. Now, I am sure that the administrative ship is capable. I'm sure that you have principals and assistant principals who, if this go in, sure, they can be out there, they can make a mandate. No assistant principal has a flexible schedule. You don't leave because you're all going to have to be here to do the bus. You can do that. I mean, it is capable. Seems to me that a few years down the road, after putting in this extra effort, maybe even hiring an extra assistant principal just to make sure that all the traffic is taken care of, or sending out notices. You can pick up your child in this five-minute interval and not another one, which the parents won't like because they're not always on time, they have their problems. I see that maybe we'll be in a situation where there will be just either a big instruction proposal or not. Now, the reason I came here, that was just on, on some.
Conclusion, Ms. Abbey.
I saw one man on the Facebook, went 20 minutes longer, so please bear with me. Okay, and that is the water, and it's, the main reason I'm here tonight is Buck Branch. Now, Buck Branch is a FEMA flood plane, and I don't see that. It's always very convenient on all of these, these slides, when there's a flood plane, everybody says, we can take care of it. You don't see it. I mean, this is what it looks like, don't look from the website here, okay? So, we have a flood, a flood plane that we have to take care of. Now, I know there's ripperium buffers, I would like to ask the person who designed this, how far is the land that will be disturbed from Buck Branch in feet? What's the closest point? You're going to have to have some, and the equipment will go through, you're also going to have to be redoing this line through Buck Branch and under Heindl's property, which floods. Say you're going to use the easement. Every time he gets a rut from a town truck, the next time it rains, there's a big deep rut, he has to keep filling them in. So, is it hesitant? How far?
I believe we, we need him to come to the podium, so this is all, this is all on tape, so please let him come, and he's willing to answer your question apparently, so.
Oh, I have to walk, you mean, whatever. Okay, right here?
That'll be good.
How close are we getting to Buck Branch? As I, the closest we're getting to Buck Branch is on the west side, where we have to tie in our new sewer to the City of Raleigh sewer main. We are probably 35 feet from the bank of the, of the stream. The impact will be a trench to put in a four-inch PVC sewer line, connect to the manhole, backfill the trench, grade it to the pre-construction conditions, seed it, and leave.
Okay.
So, we won't be impacting the stream.
Well, I'm just going to take a little bit of issue with you. I know you're all capable of doing something, but we had some people come in and put some cable a couple summers ago on Vandoor Springs Road. They told me it was nothing, in fact, they told me it was a gas line, but you could see they were taking out the cable trucks and then rolling out the cable, okay? After they left, they covered everything up, and all of a sudden, we started seeing water at the intersection of Miriam and Vandoor Springs Road. This is, for example, this is from the four-inch fall on November 12th, okay? So, the point was, we wrote letters, the city came, but there were several thunderstorms before that where this puddle of water after rain was increasing in size every thunderstorm, whereas in two years before, there'd never been a puddle of water. I'm glad the town fixed it. I'm glad, but right now, we have a situation during that November 12th thunderstorm, we had a second river form. We had Buck Branch here, and then we have a river, and this river is running down all the spine of Tiffany Circle. All of the backyards are flooded, so it's not just, we'll come and talk with Chuck and tell him, point out something. I think we really need some very good maintenance with Buck Branch. From the WCPSS side, we have trees that are falling over in people's yards. The other thing is they're blocking Buck Branch. There is erosion, so there, you can see the roots, they're falling off. They're particularly bad down by the town property, Bruce Broadwell's and Chuck's, Heindl's properties, and.
Ms. Abbey, I'm a, I'm a patient man, but I believe, you know, you're sort of, you know, you're talking about an incident that occurred before any of this.
I'm saying, okay.
And so, this, listen to me, this gentleman here has offered expert testimony in regards to how they're going to handle issues and problems there, and.
You didn't say what it's going to do about the trees.
If Buck Branch still causes you a problem, I believe we've already talked with one of the citizens out there, Mr. Singleton responded to him, and so the town will certainly try to expedite and resolve any, any problems relating to the things you're speaking of, but we need to focus tonight.
I know. It's, I feel it's a stereotype. Every time a woman gets up, you tell her she's rambling. I am telling you, this is all linked together. I'm sorry, but that's what it really feel, and I'm just, I was just. I'm sorry, but that's what it really feels, and I'm just, I was just coming to the concluding remarks there, is that this, we really need to have this looked at, even if you're going to say, we're going to do anything, we're going to ignore you, we're not going to do any of the things you ask, can you please even just give us a rename of responsible party that will work with us every time this happens? And we really need to be able to avoid land disturbance, and so we're not saying, don't do it, but we're saying, please, work with us.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you. And I believe we will do our best to do that, sure enough, okay? Okay, was there anyone else who had planned to speak at this time? Okay, hearing none. I believe I am ready to close the hearing.
I have a question, Mr. Miller, before he puts his mask on, Mr. Miller. You mentioned that you'd be willing to meet, I told you about the email, Mr. Heindl that got forwarded to you, you'd be willing to meet with him, and also Mr. Broadwell, they live both on Tiffany Circle, side by side. If we added the condition in here, I'll ask Mr. Murphy that, that this is, you will meet with these property owners on site before we proceed, is that a reasonable condition?
Yes.
To address those issues?
Yeah.
Okay. So I just wanted to confirm that you'll meet with them and address the issues before any, any, any construction starts.
One, one comment I will make.
Yes.
As I mentioned, our only disturbance on that side of the creek, near those properties, is within town of Garner property limits.
I understand.
So I would like to advise you, if he has developed improvements on your property.
I agree, and I understand that, and that's why we should meet other with.
I, that's why we should meet other with.
Well, you can see it and.
I'm hoping that's not the case, and we're well away from each other, and we won't have any impact whatsoever.
But if y'all are willing to do that, I think that'll help both Mr. Heindl and Broadwell's concerns about what's behind in their backyards.
For sure.
Okay.
I was getting ahead of myself. Counsel, your opportunity to ask questions and make comments, based on the presentation you've heard. Phil, do you have anything?
I do have a landscaping question prompted. Looking at the site plan, there's a 35-foot, he had mentioned 40 feet. What I'm seeing is a 35, is a 35-foot buffer and easement, is that what I'm seeing? Does that account for the 40 feet that he may have been told earlier?
I believe there's a 20-foot easement and then a 35-foot buffer before you get to the pavement.
Correct, yeah, the UDO.
So there's 55 feet.
Okay.
Before you get to pavement.
And my other question is on the berm height and the buffering, the screening that's there, is there a limitation on berm height per our UDO, or?
Or just for stabilizing the ground, you only want to go so steep before you cause erosion issues, and with the 35 feet, that approximately three-foot height is where you'd be able to have adequate stabilized side slopes of a berm.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vance, did you have anything? Okay. All right, thanks, sir.
I have a question, and Mr. Olson could come up. You mentioned that the GPS system that y'all use nowadays is, you're not stationed, you don't, don't get calls, and rarely are they station-based, they're out on the road almost constantly answering calls, is that correct?
That varies significantly based upon hour of the day, yes, sir. So you can imagine during the peak periods when trucks are out running calls, they're going to be running other calls, that may differ in the evening, that may differ during the morning hours, but still, you know, GPS will work at this location indoor, just like it would anywhere else.
Okay. Because y'all, because someone who's based out of this station could answer a call in Eastern Wake County or Western Wake County, just depends on where they are, if they went to one of the hospitals, if they were out near Wake Med and there was a call, and they were the closest ambulance, they could, they could be called to go to those locations.
That is correct, and it happens every hour of the day. What also happens every hour of the day is we have a system in place that backfills opens, open areas, open zones within the county, so that if there is a, there is a big push out my way in Wendell, then we pull units in to sort of fill the, to backfill in the areas that are, remain uncovered for a little time until we can get units into those areas.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Murphy, you okay? I mean, you don't have any further testimony offered, either?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right. All right, counsel, anything else, okay?
Let's speak.
I believe this gentleman's going to answer that, or well, or comment on that.
For the record, could you identify yourself again?
Adrian Johnson.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Yes, we have two fences, actually. One that runs along the north side of that landscape buffer, and then runs along the north-south of the lease lot line, and then we also have a perimeter fence around the stormwater control measure itself.
Answer your question. Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to close a public hearing. And counsel, I'll call for any other observations, comments you want to make prior to a motion, or if you're ready for a motion, I'll entertain that, but are there any other comments anyone cares to make before that? Hearing none, you have the matter before you, you've heard the testimony, and you have the options as it relates to a motion here, so I will ask, I will ask for a motion at
Mr. Mayor, I'll start it, then we can vote on it, so.
Okay.
All right. Regarding SUP SP 20-01 Garner, Maine EMS station, I find the application number SUP-SP-20-01 meets the town's eight criteria for special use permits as identified in Article 3.9.2 Delta. Therefore, I move that the town council approve SUP 20-1 East Maine EMS station with a four-site specific conditions to be listed on the permit as prepared by staff, in addition to Mr. Singleton's add-on to it.
And I guess, Mr. Attorney, do we need, yeah?
I will second that, stating that it'd be five-site specific conditions, as the last one was agreed to by the applicant, where the engineering firm will meet with Mr. Heindl at 305 Tiffany Circle and Mr. Broadwell at 307 Tiffany Circle to discuss the issue with the connection of the sewer line, sewer line to the pump station. To meet with them in person and discuss where it'll be going, if that's, okay, is that okay? Mr. Murphy, you're the attorney, so I'm looking at you. Okay, all right.
All right. Okay, counsel, we have a motion properly before us at this time. Again, I'm going to call for a vote in just a moment, but if anybody has a question or comment on the motion, that would be a good time to ask. Okay, hearing none.
I'll say this, that Mr. Spitz's comments about public hearings and CUPs and SUPs, where the land is already zoned, is spot on. The parameters where elected bodies can make decisions or have wiggle room is very, very, very limited.
Thank you. All right, counsel, if you favor the motion as presented by Councilmember Matthews, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
If there's opposition, would you vote no? And the motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, I have a point of personal privilege, just to comment kind of on what Mr. Singleton said around the quasi judicial. It is very limited, however, citizens can, attorney can correct me, can bring competent evidence for counsel to consider, you can also bring your own experts. So keep that in mind as well. That's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll recognize you one more time, if you can be brief. Do you have a question for?
Last year, that it's Buffalo Grove, I tried to get state people who were just coming and interpreting the diagram, so I could say something too. This can't do that. I call the engineering, we have been, as I said, my analysis of Tiffany, what's water An extra $350?
Ms. Abby, perhaps someone can speak to you about that outside after this meeting, but we need to move forward. We've had a motion, we've voted to approve, and so this matter is approved. I want to thank all of you who participated, for your patience. These issues aren't necessarily easy for counsel I've sat where they've sat. As a mayor, I don't get to vote most of the time, but, Mr. Murphy, you made a good presentation, and as did staff, so thank all of you for this, and I think a station certainly will, will add to the safety of our citizens here in Garner. I realize for those who live close by, they may not see that at this time, but I think it'll be something that will add to our safety and security here in the town. Yes, ma'am?
Gentlemen, I'm sorry I didn't catch your name, but about your grandson that's autistic, are you, do you feel like the fixing that's being provided is going to be adequate?
Yeah, so you finish it?
Yeah, we don't know. We would like to.
Let me, let me clear. I'm not trying to be a stickler, but I'm being reminded that for this to be effective and for the public to get a good sense of the discussion, we need really people to come to the podium to speak from there, we can't hear your comments from there. But if you're through there, we'll just leave it at that, okay? All right. Thank you, thank you very much. All right, we'll go to our next item, counsel, at this time. Thank you all. Okay, I think we have time to go to new and old business, and the first item there, I think we're going to hear from Mr. Bowie, CZ 2103, 1419 Aversboro Road. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we want to bring back the CZO 21-03 conditional, conditional zoning request, 1419 Aversboro Road. General case information, the applicant is Val Reynolds, CEO Douglas Val, owner, Federal Property Management LLC, location is 1419 Aversboro Road, and tract size is .44 acres. The request is to additionally rezone for office and institutional conditional ONI-C5 to multifamily residential conditional MF2 C243 to allow for the development of conditionally listed uses. And you see here, we have an aerial view of the site location. Here's a street view of the location. The adjacent zoning and land use, most of the properties around this site are zone MF2 to the north, south, east, and west, you can see that. We have to the north multifamily residential, which is vacant, to the south is a church, to the west is multifamily residential Georgetown Manor, and to the east multifamily residential, the land is at Heather Park. Area zoning history of note, C-85-25 Laura and Robert Hamilton rezoned is, the location is the actual site, and it was from MF2 to ONI-C5. If approved, this case would return the zoning to the site to its pre-1986 designation. Existing zoning summary, often institutional conditional use ONI-C5. It would provide for office, clerical, research and services not primarily related to goods and merchandise. Some examples are attorney's office, dentist's office, insurance offices, stockbrokers, travel agents, and banks. The proposed multifamily residential conditional MF2-C243, the following is a list of permitted uses in this zoning district for household living, you have two-family dwelling, duplex, townhouse, condominium, multifamily triplex and higher, including apartments. You also have a daycare, child daycare up to three as a home occupation, and healthcare, continuing care, retirement facility. Any form of group living protected by state or federal statute for use in single-family dwellings shall be permitted according to the specific use standards of the Garner Unified Development Ordinance. Reasons for the request, according to the applicant, the current building owner stated that the building has reached the end of its useful life without significant upgrades. The owner, the applicant owns other MF2 and community retail zone property in the area, including MF2 property currently under development. Now, you see on the map, the loss of Aversboro, Aversboro, CUP SP 1802, CUDZ-1801. Community information, overall neighborhood character, the area near the site has developed into a mixed use of townhomes, church, educational facility, offices, restaurant, and commercial retail. Neighborhood meeting, staff identifies 66 properties within the notification radius and provided a list to the applicant for first-class notices. Per town policy, the neighborhood meeting was held at 6:00 PM on March 25, 2021, with six neighborhood, neighboring property owners in attendance. And in your staff report, you will see some of the questions and answers that were provided at that meeting. Traffic information, a traffic impact analysis was not required for this request. Beneath that, you'll see the average daily traffic count history in the area, and of note, 2015 had the highest with 9,800. Public hearing information, public hearing summary, town council conducted a public hearing at their meeting on Tuesday, May 18, 2021. The council asked if construction had begun on the adjoining 1.851 acre site for the development of 26 apartment units, for which approval was granted on July 20, 2018, and staff replied that yes, in the affirmative that construction had begun. Council also asked if the property for rezoning would be integrated into the adjoining development, and we replied that that would be determined based on the outcome of the zoning request. Consistency of requests, PC meeting, statutory directive, when considering a rezoning request, the planning commission is required by state statute to make a written recommendation regarding the consistency of the zoning proposal with the town's current comprehensive plan and other applicable adopted plans. A determination of inconsistency with the plan does not preclude a rezoning request from being found to be reasonable. In those cases where the request is deemed inconsistent yet reasonable, an amendment to the comprehensive plan is automatically made upon approval of the request. Consistency of requests, PC meeting, 2018 Garner Ford land use map, this request is found to be inconsistent. The site of the request is designated as office center, multifamily uses are not suggested within that designation. Office center may have multiple non-government tenants occupying a single building, adjacent spaces or separate buildings accessed by one to two driveways from an arterial roadway. Examples may include professional or medical offices. Swift Creek Land Management Plan does not apply. The parcel that is, the parcel in question is not governed by the land use constraints of the Swift Creek Land Management Plan. Consistency statement, this request to rezon the approximately .44 acres from ONI to conditional multifamily, conditional is inconsistent with the 2018 Garner Ford Future Land Use Plan, as multifamily zoning is not a district envisioned for implementing, implementing the objectives of the office center land use classification. Staff commentary, while the request is inconsistent with the land use recommendations of the Garner Ford Comprehensive Plan, staff believes that a reasonable case can be made for supporting the overall request. During the June 14, 2021. During the June 14, 2021, Planning Commission, during their June 14, 2021 meeting, the Planning Commission failed to reach a finding concerning consistency of this request with the land use recommendations of the following plans, the 2018 Garner Ford Comprehensive Plan, the 2010-2018 Garner Transportation Plan, and the Parks, Recreation, Greenways, and Cultural Resources Master Plan. On a vote of 3-3, the Planning Commission deadlocked on the motion to accept staff's consistency statement and recommend approval to the town council. Staff understood the votes against approval were related to concerns about the change of character along the corridor and setting precedence for other lots to be zoned from ONIC to MF. Reasonableness, in addition to approving a statement regarding plan consistency upon the advice of the Planning Commission, the town council must also approve a statement of reasonableness when making their decision. Sources of reasonableness may include other sections of the 2018 Garner Ford Comprehensive Plan, providing guidance on keeping the town's character, living spaces, working places, recreation opportunities, and transportation. Other adopted town plans and policies providing guidance on parks, greenways, cultural resources, and more may serve as sources as well. Staff recommendation, staff is supportive of CZ 2103, recommend the town council approve the staff finding on consistency as stated in Section 5 of the staff report, and further recommends approval of the zoning map amendment request as a reasonable one. Staff commentary, while the request is inconsistent with the future land use map, recommendations of Garner Ford Comprehensive Plan, we believe that a reasonable case can be made for supporting overall request, and we made the following observations. Number one, the request to rezonate .44 acres would be a minor change of land use and would not negatively impact adjoining properties due to its limited size and existing adjacent zoning that would allow non-residential office uses. Number two, the site of the request is around a neighborhood activity center at Aversboro Road and Pool Drive where both commercial and multifamily uses have developed. Number three, the existing zoning pattern in this area contains a significant amount of MF2 and MF1 zoning within a quarter mile of the rezoning site. Therefore, the request is not out of character with the surrounding area. Number four, the adjacent land use map amendment associated with the recent approval of CUDZ 1801 represents a change of conditions in the area since the comprehensive plan was adopted. And here you have your motion worksheet.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowie. Council questions for Mr. Bowie and his presentation at this time? Any?
None.
Say anything over here?
I have a question. What was the recommendation of the Planning, the Planning Commission?
They were split.
So what was their recommendation?
They didn't accept our recommendation. They were, they were just, they were concerns about how if this parcel being rezoned, how would it affect other parcels with it, open the floodgate for other properties to be rezoned from ONIC to MF2.
We don't have a recommendation in either direction from the Planning Commission.
No, we do not.
That's correct. They were unable to have a motion passed, so they have not made a recommendation to council.
I don't believe that council can hear this because we're required 60 days after the first hearing. If Planning Commission doesn't get a recommendation to us, and it's not been 60 days, that's what our UDO says.
Well, I don't think it would have been, I will ask the attorney to respond to that, Mr. Dillinger.
It says the commission shall examine the request and forward a written recommendation to town council remarking on consistency with all adopted plans within 60 days. After 60 days have passed, the town council can proceed towards a decision without the commission's That seems pretty straightforward.
Mr. Trezenberg, I'll recognize you.
I mean, I'll defer to the town attorney. My understanding of that, that particular law was that if they, if they stalemated and did not find a way to move forward, and we asked them during the meeting if anybody was going to change their mind, and they said no, that that's an opportunity then for the council to pull it from them, but not that they have to, but since they indicated that neither side was going to change, I don't expect, did not expect them to come to you with a recommendation one way or the other. But I'll defer, yeah, we defer to the attorney.
Okay, so since there was a tie and no recommendation, the interpretation was made that that obviates the need, I guess, for the, perhaps the timeframe that you're referring to, but I'm not the attorney here, so.
Technically, there can't be a tie. You have a failed motion. So there's no motion at all that came out of Planning Commission on a recommendation. You don't have ties on motions.
Well, the effect of the tie vote is that no motion passed, which means there is no action or no recommendation.
And no recommendation.
But if you bear with me, I'm looking at the state law and the, because we, we did look that up at the Planning Commission, and I believe that the time actually elapsed.
From the hearing, it was May 18.
Okay. I believe it, it used to be 60 days, but as I'm looking at it, it says for zoning amendments in Section 160D-604, if no written report is received from the planning board within 30 days of referral of the amendment to that board, the governing board may act on the amendment without the planning board report. And as always, the governing board is not bound by the recommendations of any, by the planning board. So it's my understanding that this was referred at the May, I'm sorry, at the May meeting.
Hearing was in May.
Right, and then Planning Commission, you know, acted on June 14, I believe.
June 14.
Yeah.
So in the past, the 60 days more lined up with the town council, planning board, next town council meeting, it actually, in some cases, they might not necessarily have the Planning Commission meeting within that 30-day period.
And our UDO, so even though, what does our UDO say? Didn't we redo the rewrite? It says 30, or it says 60? I read it, so.
I don't believe the UDO addresses this. I think it just defers to state law, if I'm not mistaken.
Ooh.
If it, if it doesn't, state law would supersede.
Yes, Mr. Matthews?
Just a comment here, and I understand what's been said here, but a lot was made mention the 30-day window's passed. If the planning board denied it, we still could approve it. And the fact that they were deadlocked and not make a recommendation, I don't think it truly changes anything. I think this board needs to vote on this issue and move forward with it, because they didn't cite on it, or they could have cited one way or the other. Either way, we could overrode it and voted however we wanted to do as being the city council. So having said that, I, I think we need to move forward with this.
Guys, Mr. Bowie, to pull up the picture that you, where you showed the zoning, where it had the color of the different zone classifications, regional, MF2 is a dark brown, MF1's more of a tan, I reckon CR is kind of pinkish. That's good, but there's one, there's one like that. If you had that, that's on our program.
Just to clarify, I looked up the currently adopted part of the UDO, and it does still have the 60 days in. I would have to look at the strikeout version to see if that just got carried over, but it appears that we need to be consistent with state law. I'll have to do additional research to see if this is an area where we can be more stringent than state law.
Well.
My gut feeling is not because it's potentially depriving a developer of a right to move forward quicker, but that's something I could look into.
Okay. Well, I heard Councilmember Matthews indicating his view that the council could proceed. A motion hasn't been made yet, but I will ask the attorney if, given the type of discussion we've had and you've heard the differing thoughts, is it a more prudent course of action to, to table this matter and delay it until you've had a chance to maybe research this a little further? Or do you think this council could decide to go ahead and take action on the matter tonight?
Do you, pending, we could pass it with.
I'm sorry.
We could pass it with an amendment pending her findings. We could vote on. Would that be something we could do? Or not?
Yes, because this is not a quasi-judicial proceeding, you could conditionally pass it, or you could come back at your next meeting in two weeks, I think, well, or whatever period is the 60 days. I don't know if the developers here with any objection to that going forward or continuing the case pending a clarification.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of clarification for me, if I could, please, sir.
Okay.
The 60-day window we're talking about here, once the 60 days has run out, and it's not going to go back to the Planning Commission anyhow, because that's just the timelines and what have you. Again, I'm just restating my concerns here, as much stuff as we've got coming up to tie this thing up over a few days one way or the other. And once that timeline runs out, we could vote on it anyway, but we still got that opportunity to vote on it tonight and move forward. And I would still encourage this board to look at doing that, let's move forward with it, and because nothing's going to change on it. They didn't make that statement, so all we're doing is running so many extra days here, and inevitable will be the inevitable, I'm thinking.
So clearly, the state law says the town may go forward after 30 days. The ordinance requires the commission to do, you know, to make their recommendation within 60 days, and then after 60 days have passed, the town council can proceed towards a decision without the commission's report. They're not quite the same language, so.
Does, does the state law supersede the town ordinance?
Generally, yes. However, there were some parts of Chapter 160D that allows the town to be more stringent. I don't recall this being on that list, but there are some situations where town ordinances can require additional time or additional requirements above and beyond the state law. So I would say you couldn't go less than 30 days, but it's unclear whether there's authority to go more than 30 days.
Well, as the presiding officer, I'm trying to be fair to the concerns expressed and also for a view that we should move forward. So I'm inclined to, at this point, call for a motion and ask the council to, to weigh in on a motion that may be presented.
I just want to ask Mr. Bowie to bring this up, just to point something out, which I find unusual in the comments in the Planning Commission, is they were concerned about more zoning of multifamily, but if you look here, multifamily 2 is across the street, it's that rum place.
Yes.
The civic, the church is multifamily 2, that's multifamily 2, the townhouse property is multifamily 2, the Longdale Townhomes are multifamily 1, and the Birchwood ones are multifamily 1. And down here on the right, off Southly Bloss, are the two subsidized housing for seniors apartments. So I just find it unusual, where they worried about multifamily from a .44 acre, just to combine or make for this one site, I just find that a little unusual. And so the plan says it's supposed to be an office center. Well, based off the zoning and what's existing there, most everything here is multifamily and/or townhomes. Some of them have been there for many years. It's like Georgetown Manor across the street, others at Gully Glen and Myatt Fern and Wellens have just been completed in the last two to three years. The Longdale one started a few years ago. I own an office in the community retail. So everybody will know, it's no secret there, it doesn't affect how I'm going to vote on this at all. Just, I just find it unusual, they're concerned about multifamily zoning coming up, and it's all over our surroundings. There's more multifamily here than ONIC. So it's listed as an office center, but it's really a residential center with some office and community retail associated with it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Singleton, for those comments and your observation. Having heard the discussion, does anybody else want to make comment? Mr. Vance, anything for me, sir?
Um, Mr. Mayor, council, thanks for coming up. My name is Douglas Ball, 1401 Aversboro Road, Garner. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Ball. I think, I know this came before us before for the rest of the project. What's envisioned for, once this is incorporated into the larger site plan, what is envisioned for this, this portion of Aversboro leading into that development?
Can you restate that? I'm not sure I understand.
You're adding this to an existing development, that's correct.
Correct.
Which will adjust and modify a site plan.
Mm-hmm.
What will this change from the site plan that you have now by adding this to that development?
I could, I could talk about it for hours. So we, it's significantly changed the site plan, we think, for the better, and the neighbors think for the better. And we presented what we think are the redesign proposals that we have now submitted to staff for review are much better from a number of reasons. And again, the neighbors thought that that was a better product as well, from access to single building versus multiple buildings. There's several, several reasons, a better streetscape, a better access point safety, there's lots of concerns. We didn't bring this before the council haphazardly. We spent a lot of time considering this, and, and with our preliminary meetings with staff, it felt like we were going to have support, or else we wouldn't have pursued this. Did that answer your question?
Not really, but that's fine. I didn't get a real sense for how it was going to change the site plan, the configuration that we looked at, where it was just an access road, right, initially. And this addition, is it going to add more units, or is it just
All right, I believe we have at least one question. Mr. Ball, if you'll come to the podium, please, sir.
Mr. Mayor, council, thanks for coming up. My name is Douglas Ball, 1401 Aversboro Road, Garner. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. I think, I know this came before us before for the rest of the project. What's envisioned for, once this is incorporated into the larger site plan? What is envisioned for this portion of Aversboro leading into that development?
Can you restate that? I'm not sure I understand.
You're adding this to an existing development, that's correct.
Correct.
Which will adjust and modify a site plan. What will this change from the site plan that you have now by adding this to that development?
I could talk about it for hours. So it's significantly changed the site plan, we think, for the better. And the neighbors think for the better. We presented what we think are the redesign proposals that we have now submitted to staff for review are much better from a number of reasons. And again, the neighbors thought that that was a better product as well. From access to single building versus multiple buildings, there's several reasons, a better streetscape, a better access point, safety, there's lots of concerns. We didn't bring this before the council haphazardly. We spent a lot of time considering this. And with our preliminary meetings with staff, it felt like we were going to have support, or else we wouldn't have pursued this. Did that answer your question?
Not really, but that's fine. I didn't get a real sense for how it was going to change the site plan, the configuration that we looked at, where it was just an access road, right, initially? And this addition, is it going to add more units, or is it just going to change?
It does, it adds a few more units. And it improves the access. That's sort of the two major points.
And it'll, so it'll increase the density as well?
Only to the degree that it's equal to the additional property we're picking up.
Right, thank you.
Anybody else have a question, Mr. Ball? Okay. Thank you, sir. We appreciate your sharing that with us.
Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion.
All right.
I move the town accept CZ 121-03, Aversboro Road, regarding consistency of the zoning amendment request with adopted land use plans detailed in Section 4 of the staff report and find the request inconsistent. Inconsistent due, inconsistent with the future land use recommendations, the Garona Ford Comprehensive Plan. Thought I had it there. One second, give me a moment. Inconsistent.
Mr. Vance, I lost my place there in terms of which section you were reading from there. I would help you out.
Which section I'm reading from?
Yeah.
Which section, I'm reading from the Section 4 of Reasonableness?
Oh, okay.
If you're looking for the reasons for consistency, they're on page 39 in your agenda packet.
Yes, I'm looking.
They can bring them up on the screen as well.
Okay, but in the motion it says inconsistent due.
But you don't have to.
Find the request inconsistent due to.
Yes, that was the staff's conclusion on it, and that's in your agenda packet on page 39. The reasons.
Right, so I can pick one of those reasons. Okay, cool. All right, now we're on it. I will reread, I will reread for clarity. Okay. I move the town council accept CZ 21-03, Aversboro Road, regarding consistency of the zoning amendment request with the adopted land use plans detailed in Section 4 of the staff report and find the request inconsistent due to the request to rezonate .4 plus minus acres would be a minor change of land use and would not negatively impact adjoining properties due to its limited size and existing adjacent zoning and would allow non-residential office uses. Yet, I also move that the town council adopt ordinance number 2021-5046 approving Z, rezoning CZ 21-03 as requested is still reasonable in the public interest because it will likely encourage redevelopment and reuse of existing sites and buildings that are complementary to the surrounding areas.
Okay, Mr. Vance.
Yes, sir.
Comprehensive motion there, okay. Is there a second to the motion, council?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Singleton, all right.
Can I ask a question, sir?
Yeah, we're going to go to a discussion now that we, I just want to announce that a motion is properly on the floor before the council this time with a motion and a second. Now, Mr. Matthews, a question or comment?
Just make sure I understood, Mr. Vance, great. So you're going with consistent and reasonable and to make the change, is that correct? Was that your motion? So it's consistent.
Inconsistent yet reasonable.
And reasonable.
Yes, sir.
Consistent and reasonable.
Inconsistent yet reasonable.
Okay, gotcha.
Inconsistent yet reasonable.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
All right, go ahead, here, sir.
I just want to clarify that you intended for it to be Section 6, I think you said 4, you intend Section 6?
Section 6, yes, Roman, Roman news were backwards, okay.
Make sure for the record is correct.
Yeah. My Roman news were backwards.
Okay, all right. Any other question or comment from council before we vote?
Just like to add the conditional pending the attorney's review, that we are able to actually approve this, that she will review it and make sure we are actually legally able to approve this now. And if not, it come back, but if we are, then it would go forward as moved.
Am I correctly interpreting, Mr. Dellen, I guess that would be an amendment to the motion?
Yes.
So see, if we're on an amendment, I believe we have to have a second and a vote on the amendment first, right?
What was the amendment? I can't understand what you're saying.
So basically, if we vote for it and then find out we are allowed to, it goes through, and if we find out we can't, then we'd have to, it'd have to come back after the 60 days. So just in case we aren't able to do, we are able, just making sure we can actually do this and she'll review it.
And if not, it will be back at the next meeting, which would be 60 days. Based off May 18th.
Yeah.
It'll be July 20th.
Yeah.
So let me see if I've got my parliamentary procedure correct. If, I guess we may not need to vote on the amendment if the person who initially made the motion is not opposed to the amendment being added, or do we need to vote on the amendment first?
That's my understanding, if it's accepted as a friendly amendment, you can go forward. If it's intended as a substitute motion, then you would need a second on the substitute and you would vote on that first. It's up to Mr. Vance.
If it's accepted as the motion, then we're fine.
Accept my amendment, Mr. Vance. Thank you, sir.
Okay, all right. So the motion and the add-on or the amendment is before the council at this time with the council member who made the original motion accepting of the wording provided by Mr. Dellen, you're right. Okay. So, council, I will ask you if you approve the motion. Please vote aye.
Aye.
If you are opposed to the motion, please vote no. Okay, and a motion passes, and I'm sure our attorney will let us know if there are any other issues to be clarified.
Yes, so, I mean, if there's a problem with this vote, then I'll have it put back on the agenda for you to have a new vote after the 60 days.
All right, thank you very much, thank you.
If there isn't an issue, then I'll just report back to council.
Okay. I believe Mr. Ball wanted to.
If it does come back, can we have it on the consent agenda?
I'm sorry.
If it does come back before the board, based on the attorney's findings, we would just ask that it be on the consent agenda.
I guess it'd be up to the council, Mr. Ball, but I wouldn't oppose that as a presiding officer.
If it's allowed, if it's allowed.
If a council member objects to that, you would be pulling it off the consent agenda that evening.
Right.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah.
Thank you, and that's outside of my lane, so I'll, but I do want to make sure I invite everyone to come to the Operation Coming Home out at Oak Park. I think you're going to get an invitation to that, and look forward to seeing all of you there that can make it, so.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Okay, council, we've got a little ways to go, but we're making pretty good progress. So it is 9 o'clock, and that's the time we usually try to adjourn, so why don't we do that at this point in time for a 10-minute adjournment break? And we'll come back and pick up on item 2, I believe it is. So I'm going to declare a 10-minute adjournment at this time. Okay, I declare we're back in session after a break, and we're at item 2. Recognize, Mr. Bamford, this is under new and old business. So, Mr. Bamford, we're here for you, sir.
Good evening, mayor and members of council. This is a conditional use zoning request with a master plan attached. This was, the public hearing was on May the 18th, and went to Planning Commission on June the 14th, and this is back before you tonight for a decision. The property is located at the northwest corner of Auburn Nightdale Road and East Corner Road. It's approximately 66.67 acres in size. The request is to conditionally rezone from multi-residential 1, which is an obsolete district, carried over from a previous land use ordinance to plan residential development, PRD, conditional use District 13, to allow for the development of the conditionally listed uses according to an offered master plan and other conditions. This map shows the project and rezoning boundary outlined in orange. Auburn, the property has frontage along Auburn Nightdale Road and also East Corner Road. The predominant land use on the north side of East Corner Road is residential, single family. South of East Corner Road towards Highway 70, you've got a mix of single family and some industrial uses and also a retail use a little farther down on Highway 70 East. This is a Google Street View looking west. Auburn Nightdale Road is the road that runs through the intersection here. This is East Corner Road, and the rezoning site is this site here. Again, it's approximately 66 acres. Current zoning is multi-residential 1. This is an old obsolete district that was carried over. North of the site, we have some low-density residential 20, R20 zoning, which allows agricultural uses. To the northeast, we do have another PRD development, Auburn Village. That is an over 55 community. To the east, we do have some R40 and R20 zoning located in this area, east of Auburn Nightdale Road. Southeast, we do have some light industrial zoning, south of the railroad. On the other side, on the west side of Auburn Nightdale Road, south of the railroad, we do have some service business zoning, and this was the golf driving range. Directly to the west of the site, we do have a small area zoned manufactured home zoning. This is in green here, and then directly to the west along Auburn Church Way, we do have some more multi-residential 1 zoning. This request is a conditional request, and the applicant has proposed to limit the range of uses only to the following, single family detached. So all other uses would be prohibited. So no multi-family uses are proposed for this site, no apartments and no townhomes. Your staff report has the full list of proposed conditions. These include architectural conditions. Since you last saw this request at the public hearing, the conditions have been amended to exclude vinyl siding, except for trim and accent features. All homes will be finished primarily with cementous fiberboard and/or masonry siding. So that's a change since the last time you have seen this application.
Again, as David mentioned, this is 174 single family units with three product types. You'll see them outlined there on the screen for you. Product A, B, and C. They have different minimum lot widths and different home square footage range. You'll see that they have put a range of units on there, but they will not exceed 174 total, whatever that makeup is. That just gives them a little flexibility in case they need to make one a product A versus a product B, or so on and so forth. The setbacks are the same for all of their unit types as well. You see the master plan there with the different kind of blocks of unit types outlined and how they're kind of dispersing those. The green at the bottom of your screen that has an asterisk is where the main amenity will be, so it would be a focal point coming in off of East Garner Road. There's a minimum of 12% tree canopy required. They have committed to 12% preservation, plus additional canopy will be provided via landscaping their street trees, that kind of thing. There's no perimeter buffers required, as this is a PRD. However, we do, like I say, we'll recheck those at each stage of plans that are submitted. But there is a required 25-foot perimeter setback for PRDs, and they are committed to retaining the vegetation to the maximum extent possible they can within that 25-foot perimeter setback. And their street trees provided are required every 40 feet on average throughout the development. With PRDs, you have a minimum 25% open space required, in this case, 16.67 acres. They are committed to a minimum of 25.5%. Open space will be made up of environmentally sensitive areas, active recreation areas, and passive recreation areas. There is a pedestrian circulation system that connects open spaces in a network with emphasis on trails and side paths, as required in the PRD section. There's no FEMA-designated floodplain on the site, but the floodplain, but the site is impacted by riparian buffers along streams, and these are shown on the master plan as well. Services provided for Raleigh Public Utilities through an 8-inch water line in East Corner Road and new water and sewer infrastructure at Auburn Village to the northeast. Lighting for streets and common areas are required to meet UDO regulations, as well as stormwater devices. Water lines and hydrant spacing are required to meet Garner Fire and Raleigh Water Rules and Regulations, and transportation and access are addressed in accordance with adopted plans and regulations. Those are all things that are reviewed during the preliminary plat that is subsequent to this master plan. Overview of the transportation and access, you see there. Again, the main access that I showed earlier on East Garner Road. Then they'll have a second access point along Auburn Nightdale Road, and that exact location will be determined by NC DOT. They're still working with them on that exact location as they develop the preliminary plat. There is a fixed point of access to the north for adjacent parcels that they have committed to keeping for those adjacent parcel owners. And they're going to be looking as part of the upcoming southeast area study at that curve right there and the intersecting roads and how to best deal with that for final cross-sections along Auburn Nightdale Road as well. The UDO does require a minimum of two access points to the neighborhood. They currently are showing two. One, that's an ingress egress along Auburn Nightdale Road, and then again, the other one along East Garner Road. The transportation plan requires a stub to the north, which is provided, and there's also a fixed point to the north required to main access to the existing landlocked homes, as I said before. The transportation plan does require widening of East Garner and Auburn Nightdale Road to half of their future full width, and fire inspections has preliminarily approved road access and road network plans through this master plan.
Moving on to the neighborhood meeting, there were approximately 59 different property owners within the 300-foot notification radius. The neighborhood meeting was held on April the 15th, 2021, at a church in the vicinity, and there were approximately 22 property owners in attendance. Some were within the notification radius and some were outside. The public hearing was held on May the 18th, and we got more information in your staff reports on the public hearing. The main concern raised was traffic and the access and. The main concern raised was traffic and the access in, in the curve. The Planning Commission held their meeting on June the 14th and they found that the request was consistent with the 2018 Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan, the Transportation Plan, and the Parks and Recreation Greenway and Cultural Resources Master Plan. And the vote was unanimous to accept the consistency statement as their own. Reasonableness, the council must also approve a statement of reasonableness when making their decision. Staff recommendation, staff supports case CZPD 21-01 Auburn Station and recommends Town Council approval of the Planning Commission's statement of consistency and further recommends approval of the zoning amendment as a reasonable one. You have a motion worksheet and staff's recommendation is highlighted. We will be happy to answer any questions and the applicant is here as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Branford and all of you. Council questions regarding this presentation? Mr. Matthews, anything?
Mr. Singleton?
Clarification, I think we asked, or had some discussion, I don't know if we asked the question in regards to improvements along Auburn Nightdale Road. That will be on their side of the road improved upon, just as it is. Further up the road for the Auburn Estates, it'll be improved curb and gutter sidewalk, et cetera, correct?
That's my understanding, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Behringer? Mr. Tallinger?
Couple early questions. If you go back to the perimeter buffer, I have questions about that. It would be clear.
Is there a table or is that the map?
Do you want to come up with the graphic there?
The text about it not being perimeter buffers, none required. Why is there, I'm confused about the perimeter buffers if it's a PRD.
PRDs do not have perimeter buffers. They have a 25-foot perimeter setback.
Okay.
But it's not a planted buffer, per se. It's a 25-foot perimeter setback.
In this master plan, is that where the majority of the canopy preservation is going to occur? I don't seem to see any inside planting.
They have a good bit in their environmental areas as well. They'll have some in that perimeter setback, but they do have, have a good bit in their environmental areas.
And I do have another question about the PRD designation and that zoning. Have, have we rezoned a PRD to only have single-family homes?
Yes, they, I can't remember which on ones though, because I know it, we've done a couple with them to have, Auburn Village was one. And we've done...
Have we passed any?
Aurora.
No, no, that was R9, that was R9 condition.
If I didn't find any, when I re, when I researched, I didn't find any. I mean, the PRD seems to be designed for...
Maybe it's just we've had Bethel. Yeah, we've had one more, Bethel.
So only one and it was only single-family?
Mm-hmm.
And why was it able to be rezoned? PRDs that we all, that I've seen and that we've approved have all been multiple types of housing, which is what the UDO says, and having single-family and townhomes. So it goes back to my first question, the first hearing about the rezoning itself. The existing zoning seems adequate to accomplish what they want to accomplish, except the PRD seems to have less stringent screening requirements. So I guess my question goes back to why it doesn't seem to fit a PRD.
So we have interpreted in the past with that case and others, I think, is we've talked to people that different housing types could be different lot sizes or, I think in the case of Bethel, their big difference was that they promised a master-down product, wasn't it? A ranch, a ranch or a master-down product. The PRD does allow for some smaller lot sizes, but it does have some trade-offs as far as open space is concerned and that perimeter setback, which if it was straight, single-family zoning against straight, single-family zoning, nothing would be required.
It's not a rule, it's more an exception that we do this for single-family rezonings.
Currently, we do have another one in review as well that will be coming before you that's also single-family. Okay, Bingham Station on Ackerman apparently was also approved as a single-family PRD.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Vance, anything?
Questions?
Okay. Are we looking to hear from other folks tonight? I will entertain.
Thank you, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the Town Council. My name is Laura Holloman. I'm with the McAdams Company, 2905 Meridian Parkway in Durham, for the record. Thank you all for allowing me to speak. I'll be brief, given the, the late hour. But just to reiterate, staff did a wonderful job presenting the project as they always do. They've been wonderful to work with without the, throughout this process. As you recall, in our public hearing back in May, we talked about the amenities, the differing lot sizes. You know, PRD is not the easy route to go through. It requires a lot of extra work and engineering and design done upfront. There's a master plan that's required that we talk, that outlines the criteria of the lot sizes, the design, where the tree preservation is going, the vehicular and pedestrian circulation, which the PRD provides a great emphasis on the multi-use paths and private walking paths throughout the site. That's something that's definitely given higher scrutiny by staff throughout the process than a traditional subdivision development, as well as the open space. The open space is 25%. That's something that's not typical under a con, a conventional subdivision as well. So it's really in exchange for the, the differing, allowing the, the differing lot sizes than what otherwise would be allowed in an R9 subdivision. We're also allowing a higher quality of architecture. You saw the added no vinyl siding throughout, unless trim materials is also allowed. We've also provided a wide range of other architectural elements that every, that every product will have, offering will have in exchange for the tree preservation that you mentioned. One thing we like about this site, as, as Mr. Branford's shown, there's a lot of this that was previously cleared. But the great thing about it is where the, the stream buffers and environmental areas are allowed, that is along the perimeter of the site, especially on the western side and parts of the northern side. So that really allows for a lot of the tree preservation and naturally occurring perimeter buffers to occur, which we, we like about this site. And we're happy to answer any questions and we're very pleased to get a unanimous recommendation from Planning Board. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions for this, or you, do you want to speak first?
This is, yes, the traffic engineer I'll introduce is, is she has some traffic things outlined.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Caroline Cheves. I'm a professional traffic engineer in the state of North Carolina. I work at Ramey Kemp Associates and my work address is 5808 Farringdon Place in Raleigh, North Carolina. As stated in the staff report and in the previous meetings, the main concern with traffic is the location of the site access on Auburn Nightdale Road, both in relation to the curve and in relation to the proximity of Daniel's Landing Drive. The location shown on the previous, around the concept on the screen was chosen primarily based on the connection point that the site is required to make to the north of the parcel and that it is on the outside of the curve and has adequate site distance. However, it is still subject to the NC DOT and Town standards, including intersection spacing and site distance requirements. Since our last public meeting, we proactively met with the Town and representatives of the DOT to discuss potential solutions to the site access due to the number of concerns. Although the development does not have the final design drawings based on coordination with NC DOT and the Town, and in my professional opinion, there is a solution for appropriate site access that meets the NC DOT and Town standards along Auburn Nightdale Road. The solution will not be finalized until the site is fully designed, but, and the exact location of the driveway is subject to change, as shown in the staff report. And I'm available to answer any questions regarding this.
Thank you very much. Questions for Caroline?
Yes.
Did I get it? Vance, anything?
What are the, what are the, what's the preliminary solution? And what's the problem?
So there were some concerns from the neighbors regarding the Daniel's Drive proximity and just in general, just concerns about that curve. So one of the solutions that we're looking at is just, as staff showed, the range that we're looking at shifting the driveway to provide a greater distance between Daniel's, Daniel's Landing. And that would, yes. So we're just considering those options. And however, one, until we have that roadway design of the frontage improvements that the development is providing, we can't properly assess exactly the site access or the, the site distance requirements. We can't properly assess the site distance until we have all that road widening and know exactly where the driveway is going to be located in relation to the curb and the, the, along the curb. So, and one of the things that the widening will do is it will sort of be able to flatten out that curve slightly. Obviously won't be able to fix it completely straighten it, but it will allow for that curve to operate safer.
Wouldn't a, wouldn't a traffic impact analysis provide a lot of that insight? It sounds like we're going to be constructing the road relative to what is approved versus deciding what's best for the road and then designing to the road.
A traffic impact analysis wasn't required for this project because it has a lower traffic volume. However, this is typically reviewed by site, site distance requirements are typically reviews, reviewed by NC DOT when determining the, the driveway permit, permitting process. So even though a development doesn't need a traffic impact analysis, it still has to be, it has, still has to meet NC DOT standards to have a driveway along NC DOT roads.
I'll ask my question again. Wouldn't a, in traffic impact analysis, give a lot of insights into all these questions?
Not necessarily. Sometimes the traffic impact analysis is done at a stage where the driveway isn't exact, exactly located in an instance like this. And, you know, sometimes it's done at a rezoning when the site plan isn't fully vetted and we would make recommendations to ensure that the site distance is adequate, but that is still something that would need to be addressed at the driveway permitting with NC DOT. So after the TIA would be conducted.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Behringer, anything? Ms. Singleton?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are we hearing from anyone else here? No, okay. All right. Counsel, any questions for staff further?
I have some more questions.
Okay.
What feedback did you get from Planning Commission on the safety of that road?
So just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, you're asking what feedback Planning Commission had specifically about safety concerns along Auburn Nightdale Road?
Yeah.
So they, they voiced some of the same concerns as the residents that turned up for the public hearing. And one being the proximity of this entrance to the Daniel's Landing entrance, so to that subdivision across the road. So that was one concern. And the other concern was just the nature of that curve and how, even though there's a reduced speed limit in that area, it, people tend to go above the speed limit. So there were just concerns about, you know, vehicles that are coming along that road and driving excessive speeds and the potential conflict with, with residents that are coming out of this driveway. And so those were the concerns that were voiced at Planning Commission.
I know that, I mean, I watched it and I listened to Vera give concerns about, she goes to the church on that other curve and how the speed, there's so much traffic on that road that they have to get the sheriff out there to help direct traffic because their congreg, members of their congregation have been hit on that road. Mr. Fox also weighed in on very serious concerns about this road and both communicated a desire for us to be more proactive, since this is a major collector. And while we're relying on developers to give us this sort of traffic impact analysis seems, I agree with them, it seems short-sighted. This is going to be a major thoroughfare and there are very limited options on how it can be fixed because it's an old country road. And I have severe reservations on how safe this is. And without a traffic impact analysis, that would benefit not just this development and the safety of the people that are coming into that neighborhood. As mentioned, it's an older community. They have shorter reaction times trying to jump out in front of traffic that's going. There were serious concerns on the safety of, of this. And to design the road relative to what we approved seems backwards because the last condition of this motion is to design it according to this master plan, which would tie, to me, it seems to tie our hands to say, well, we approved that you can do it exactly like lines are here. But then if DOT comes back and wants to make adjustments, you, well, you said we could do it just like this. My recommendation would be to remove that condition and also require a traffic impact analysis because this is a major, this is a fast-growing area.
So one thing that I would offer up is, I, I understand the concern about their, well, one about just the safety concerns in general along Auburn Nightdale Road. And, I mean, part of that is just the curve, which can't be helped either by developer. But I would offer up that the traffic impact analysis is usually more so aimed at determining, based on the amount of traffic that's going to be generated, what off-site improvements can be made. But as the applicant was pointing out earlier, those details, such as the site distance and the exact location of the driveway, wouldn't necessarily be refined through the traffic impact analysis. And I, I do agree that we need to be more proactive in figuring out what might make, you know, traffic operation along here, along this corridor, more safe, especially as density goes up. But that was the other point that staff was pointing out is that we are working with the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization on the southeast area study, which is about to kick off in the, the next few months here to, and we had recommended including this area in that study to try and figure out ultimately what will, what will improve the safety and traffic operation along there because it's, it really is something that needs to be looked at on a, on a bigger scope, not just site-specific, if that makes sense.
And so a traffic impact analysis associated with this project that's very, very close to triggering by UDO would be helpful.
It's not... Right, and Jeff was pointing out is that the, the... It's, right, and Jeff was pointing out is that the, the TIA also focuses more on the traffic volumes, not necessarily the, the geometry of where these improvements would go. And so, it wouldn't necessarily get at the issues that we're looking at here. But yes, the, it was not too far off from the TIA threshold, but again, just pointing out that those kinds of specifics wouldn't necessarily come through the TIA.
Ms. Mr. Dellinger, I can, I can come back to you in a minute. Let, let me get a, a few of your fellow council members an opportunity here. This is kind of a one-way conversation. I think I'd already asked Mr. Vance, he had anything, is that right? Ms. Behringer?
I, I have concerns about us not knowing exactly where those driveways are going to be when we ask to approve the plan. And Mr. Dellinger makes a good point that it is a senior living community and reaction times are slower for these folks, and we don't want to be responsible for passing on a plan that we feel like is not complete and that puts the safety of these folks at risk. So, I would like to see some more definite information about exactly where they're going to put those driveway connections before we say, okay. I like the idea of the, the plan, it's, it's fine, but it's too iffy on the, where those driveways are going to be.
Okay, you have sensed that on this comment or question, you'd like to respond here? Come, please.
Yes, if I can approach the board. We'd like to offer an additional zoning condition that would allow for some further clarification on the site access along Auburn-Nightdale, proposing it to be the following. Site access along Auburn-Nightdale Road is subject to the North Carolina Department of Transportation and Town of Garner standards. In order to meet the NC DOT and town standards, the exact driveway location may be subject to change along Auburn-Nightdale Road. This would give, as we move forward with additional review during the preliminary subdivision design and proper vetting, this would allow flexibility with that not to be a fixed point, but allow flexibility subject to NC DOT and both town standards and allow that site access location to be changed and wouldn't lock us in is the intent of this master plan.
Anything else? Thank you. I think I caught all of that or most of it anyway, but, yeah. Okay, Mr.?
Just one comment. The access is going to be wherever DOT tells them they can put it, and, you know, we have no governing control over that. Wherever DOT says it's going to have to go, that's where it's going to have to go. As it's showing here, the sideline is kind of middle way in the curve, you can see both directions. I don't know where DOT, they'll make that decision, and they'll have to live with it, and, and we move forward. But again, they'll make that final determination, and we can't do anything about it, neither can they. So, we can tie this thing up as long as we want to, or just move on with it and wait for DOT to do what they're going to do anyway.
Okay. Ms. Singleton?
I appreciate the amendment, and I think that should be added if we move forward with this. We have done this previously. We did it with the town home project on Old State's Road, in that there was flexibility that DOT would meet with staff, and they would determine the best and most safest point of access in that curve across from Springfield, Springfield Baptist Church. And so, I'm sorry. Poplar Springs, this is Springfield Baptist, pardon me. Poplar Springs. And so, we have done this before as the town and the design firm and DOT worked to get the safest point of access. Now, I think one of the biggest concerns we heard at the hearing was they didn't want it across from Daniels Lane. And, make sure I got that right, I've already called one road wrong. So, I think that was one of the biggest concerns, they didn't want it there. And this has moved it to the curve, which I can see the concern that the few people in that, that location had because they are located in a place that was approved many, many years ago when it was less traffic. But nowadays, that is not a, not as safe in a driveway or road coming out of Auburn-Nightdale as it was many years ago. So, we, we've done this before.
Okay. Was there, was there any other comments you wanted to make?
I appreciate the comments, and just to reiterate, you know, this is the rezoning, this is the first step. This is as, as you stated correctly, there is a preliminary subdivision plan process we will again go through a full review with both the town NC and NC DOT as well.
Okay, thank you for offering up that additional condition. Anything else from counsel? I believe, anybody else over here?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I do have something to add in reference to the, the driveways. This is not a finished plan, but it will be fine tuned. And I agree with what my fellow councilmen have said in reference to, the adjustments will be made as they go on and get, and get, and get a better idea as to what a best site this is will be, what would be the best, the best place to be safe. And, and it is a, it is a, it is a curve, and it is a curve. So, and DOT doesn't like curves. We like to straighten things out, but then this case is not going to be straightened out, so the best thing to do is to find the best place to put the, with the driveway.
And people do drive too fast on that curve and a lot of other curves in our town, we hear that often, so.
Too fast on straightways, too, in our town.
Yeah. Okay, that's a topic for another day, I guess. But at any rate, thank you for offering that, for the clarification. I believe at this point, let's see, okay?
There's a quick question for the attorney on the last condition, on that it be developed in conformity with the attached master plan. Is that in any way constrict our ability to, for this other work that's going on with the road to change? Are we locked in, basically, with this master plan in any way that would inhibit any changes to the road by keeping that condition there?
I think the additional condition is more specific. Starts to Auburn-Nightdale Road.
Okay.
Other situations you're concerned about in the master plan? General replacement of the lots and the environmental features.
And it doesn't tie staff's hands on anything either? I want them to have as much flexibility as possible.
I don't think so. Once that's determined, that may impact the site layout, but that will be discussed further as the plan's made.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, counsel, are you ready to put a motion on the floor and vote? The ordinance here? Mr. Matthews, I recognize you, sir.
Regarding CZ-PD-2101 Auburn Station, a move that the town council accept the Planning Commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment request with adopted land use plans detailed in section six of the staff report, as our town and our father moved that the town council adopt ordinance 2021-5047 approving rezoning CZ-PD-2101 as a request is reasonable in the public interest because it will likely be of overall design, it keeps the town's character and improvements of property values.
Okay, thank you, sir. Motion is properly on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Sure, Vance, thank you, okay.
You did clarify the additional condition?
I did not.
Okay, if you'll clarify that, that the additional condition proposed on Ms. Holloman will be included?
Okay, I will add that.
Be good with that. Okay, everybody understands. All right. Unless there's any other question or comment, I'm going to call for a vote. So, the motion that's been properly made and seconded, that's before you, if you're in favor of that motion, would you vote by saying aye?
Aye.
If you're opposed, vote no. Okay, the motion passes, and I thank you all for your indulgence, and thank you, staff, as well. Next item is item three. Mr. Bowie, is it you? Okay, telecommunication facility in the Lake Benson area overlay district. So, go right ahead when you're ready.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting telecom commun- telecommunication tower text amendment UDO 21-01. General case information, the applicant is Mr. Thomas H. Johnson, Jr., and the location is Lake Benson Conservation Overlay District. Reason for the request is that a cell tower at 828 Thompson Road is being discontinued due to expiration of a lease agreement, and the removal of this tower will create a gap in, in service coverage for this area. Many properties in the area of Garner south of Timber Drive along Thompson Road are within the Lake Benson Conservation Overlay District, and due to both Timber Drive and LBC Overlay restrictions, finding a suitable qualifying site for a cell tower has been difficult. The stated purpose of the ABC, the LBC Overlay District is to protect Lake, Lake Benson from, protect the lake from non-point pollution risk sources. Telecommunication facilities have a limited impervious footprint that's far less than other permitted uses, including multifamily residences, churches, public parks, community centers, and indoor and outdoor recreation, all of which have considerable park required, parking requirements in addition to the facilities themselves. Additionally, necessary mo- necessary most municipally owned and operated utilities such as water towers are also allowed. Staff has consulted with Riley Water and Wake County Planning Department, and neither of these jurisdictions restrict telecommunicate, telecommunication towers around water sources apart from applicable zoning setbacks, and neither jurisdiction indicated they had any objection to the proposal. Up for amendment is Article 4.9D where telecommunications facilities are not listed as permissible uses, and Article 5.3, specific use standard subsection B 85C5, where it says towers should not be allowed in Lake Benson Conservation Overlay District. Current text in Article 4, section 4.9, Lake Benson Conservation District. Number one, you can see a list of everything that is permitted. You have several things such as agricultural, townhouses, churches, duplex and triplex, cemeteries, home occupations, planned residential developments. So, there's several things that are permitted there. And also, current text in Article 5, section 5.3B 8C5, the proposed tower location must be in conformity with the comprehensive growth plan, the transportation plan, and other plans officially adopted by the town council. In applicable zoning overlay districts, towers should not be allowed in the Lake Benson Conservation Overlay District. The proposed text by the applicant, everything stays the same except in the last sentence says towers should not be allowed in Lake Benson Conservation District, Overlay District, except upon approval of the town council. In Article 4.9D, they want to add telecommunications facility to the, the list of permitted uses. This is proposed language by staff, excuse me. Also in Article 5, section 5.3B 8C5, we would add, I'll just read it, the proposed tower location must be in conformity with the comprehensive growth plan, the transportation plan, and other plans officially adopted by the town council, and applicable zoning, zoning overlay districts, I-40US-741 and Timber Drive and Lake Benson Conservation Overlay. Consistency of requests, when considering a text amendment, the planning commission is required to states, by state statute, to make a written recommendation regarding the consistency of the zoning proposal with the town's current process comprehensive plan and other applicable adopted plans. These plan includes 2018 Garner Ford Comprehensive Plan, the 2010-2018 Garner Transportation Plan, Parks, Recreation, Greenways, and Cultural Resources Master Plan. At your last meeting, the question was raised, due to the adoption of UDO 2004, where could we possibly locate new monopoles? So, we made some maps that, that highlight some areas. So, here you have 104 High Hope Lane. After adoption of UDO 20, 2004, you'll see the area in, in red where you could have a, a monopole with 108 foot setback, which is 6% of the 180 foot height of the monopole. Also at 4725 Auburn-Nightdale Road, after adoption of UDO 2004, you have a site where you could have 100 foot, 108 foot setback, again, which is 60, 6% of the 180 foot monopole. And again, 817 Presser Drive, after the, the adoption of UDO 2004, you have this site, which is with 108 foot setback, which is 6% of 180 foot monopole. LBC potential communication locations, R-40 parcels in the LBC Conservate, the LBC District with potential for communicate, telecommunications tower. So, the area you see highlighted in purple is the actual overlay district, and the R-40 zoning parcels are, are highlighted in gold. And you have the proposed tower site, and also the tower to be decommissioned, which is in blue. Reasonableness, in addition to approving a statement regarding the plan consistency, upon the advice of the planning commission, the town council must also approve a statement of reasonableness when making their decision. Sources of reasonableness may include other sections of the 2018 Garner Ford Comprehensive Plan, providing guidance on keeping the town's character, living spaces, working places, recreation opportunities, and transportation. Other adopted town plans and policies providing guidance on parks, greenways, cultural resources, and more may serve as sources as well. And you have the staff's recommendation for UDO 20101, telecommunications facilities in LBC Overlay District. Are there any questions?
Okay, thanks, Ms. Bowie. Counsel, questions for Mr. Bowie? I'll start with Mr. Singleton.
Yes, sir.
Behringer?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Matthews?
No, sir.
Mr. Vance?
No, sir.
Mr. Dellinger?
Comment and question. One, just appreciative of the thoroughness of this from the first time it came to us. It's presenting a lot of specific information and maps, and it's very helpful. I do have a question on the ordinance that's before us in our packet, seems to differ a little from what, the one you read. I think the one you read said that they weren't allowed except with approval of the town council, but that isn't a-
That is the current ordinance, yes, sir.
That's the, that's the current, I thought that was-
No, that is, that is, that is the applicant's suggested language.
And this is what we derived from that. Okay, so let me read this again. Thank you for that clarification. But this version doesn't, it's more general than approving specific sites like the applicant recommended, correct?
Yes.
Oh, I kind of like the applicant's version better. And what was the rationale for not using the language that was suggested by the applicant?
Staff just, you know, put our heads together, and that's what they came and thought would be better than what the applicant suggested. But it also meets the needs of the applicant, but also preserves what the town needs as well.
The applicant's proposal didn't indicate- Was it judicial with a special use?
Okay, thank you.
Do we want to hear from the applicant?
He is here if you have questions.
I'm Tom Johnson with the Law Firm of Williams Mullen here on behalf of American Tower, who's the applicant. And I'm just here available to answer any questions, and I, I'm fine with what staff has proposed as an alternative to my language. I made a suggestion, but do understand and concur that that's better language than what I propose.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Questions for the gentleman?
Any questions?
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you, sir.
One more question for staff on the, this is, this is specifically for a tower what we're talking about, but the language used is communicate, telecommunications facility. How do we define that in our U D O? That sounds like it could be something bigger than a just tower, which is what we're sort of trying to get to.
The answer is anything over thirty-five feet in height.
Okay, so it's towers. Okay, okay, thank you.
All right. Counsel, you've heard from staff, you've heard from the applicant, I believe we've heard from everybody we need to at this point. Any other questions or comments before I ask for a motion?
I move the town council set the planning commission's written statement regarding consistency of the text amendment request with adopted land use plans detailed in section six of the staff report as our own, and our further move the town council adopt ordinance number two oh two one five oh four eight approving the text amendment U D zero dash two one dash oh one as the request is reasonable in the public interest because it will likely align the development code with the town's desired ends, and it will permit a use with a small impervious surface footprint, not in conflict with the stated purpose of the Lake Benson Conservation District.
Suck it.
Okay, thank you both gentlemen for the motion and the second. Counsel, as you have a final comment, I'm going to ask for a vote. So you've heard the motion, if you favor the motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
If you are opposed, no, and there is no opposition, so. Motion is approved, and ordinance adopted. Thank you, thank you all for your patience.
I believe that, let me see, that covers all of the items under our new and old business, so we'll move right through our agenda to committee reports. I know we reported last time, you guys are interviewing or have.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Still going, still going through the process, we'll continue interviews this week and start looking closely at the applications and individuals within the next week or so.
Okay, thank you. Any other committee reports from others? Okay. Eric Nunn, manager, we will hear from you, sir.
Hey, you have Garner info and answer any questions about that. And then also, Mr. Johnson's going to come up and just talk you through the capital project status list that we give you periodically, and go through the status of some of the main projects that we have in here.
Welcome, Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, good evening. I was just going to really just kind of hit on some of the highlights from the quarterly report. As I'm sure you're aware, the New Rand Road, Garner Road project is nearing completion. They are actually wrapping up final paving operations today on New Rand Road south of seventy with all the temporary striping in place and lanes are open. So for the most part, the only work remaining along that corridor is the final thermoplastic striping and signage, and then restabilization of all the disturbed areas, and then to do a walkthrough with D O T, which will probably occur within the next week or so. There may be a little bit of road work still remaining along Garner Road. They've got to do a little bit of profile milling along the new curb and gutter that was recently installed, and what was out there today is more of a temporary patch, but they're going to come back through and do a little bit of work there to finalize the Garner Road frontage. The Jones Sausage Road Phase One project, which is the first phase of two phases that the town is pursuing design on, that will extend the four lane section from Amazon to Garner Road, is nearing twenty-five percent plan, so we'll be getting those plans in the near future and reviewing those. And once that process is complete, then we'll be moving forward with preparation for the first public meeting for that project. And the Vandor Springs Sidewalk Project land acquisition has been completed with the help of the town attorney, and we're working on finalizing plans and permitting for the project, and we're hoping to advertise that hopefully by the end of this month or early next month. Lake Drive and White Oak Roundabout, both of those projects are currently in the land acquisition phase. Lake Drive plans are approximately ninety percent complete, while White Oak Roundabout's more around seventy-five percent complete. Staff has also completed a design on-call request for qualifications, received nineteen proposals and reviewed them, and we have planning to bring council some contracts here in the near future to get some on-call set up with professional engineering firms that can handle a lot of the upcoming sidewalk projects and other projects that may come along if a bond referendum is passed this fall. But we'll be bringing those to you once we get through getting the contracts set up with each individual consultant. As far as town maintenance projects, the two thousand and twenty-one resurfacing contract is nearing completion. We've only got two streets remaining at this point, Highland and Pine View. All the other streets that were under the contract, both under the original contract as well as the change order that council approved, have been completed. They've also taken care of the speed table replacements in Cloverdale and Greenbrier. We do have a couple that we're going to be replacing because they didn't quite meet the specification. They've also completed approximately seventy percent of the tables in Eagle Ridge, so I think they finished most of the ones on Seastone, Seastone Street today, which was the bulk. They will be coming back and doing final striping on all the speed humps at one time. So there's some out there that have some temporary markings on them just to get drivers' attention, but it's not the final striping that will be put in.
Sure.
Yeah, I drove over to Cloverdale, so complaining over there. But I mean, did they just misgauge on the first go around on that?
There was just, there was, it's, there, the, the, the speed tables are not very high, and there's, there's a couple that were changed in location because the new tables are a little longer than the, what was out there. So we did have a few areas that were changed, and sometimes depending on the vertical topography of where you're at as well, it can also impact maybe one approach more than the other. And I think that's the situation we had, is we had two tables out there, I think on both on Meadowbrook. The first two had one direction that was working fairly well, the other direction with the grade of the road and the grade of the transition, it just wasn't enough, and so that's, that's, that's not, we've been paying very close attention to that, and it hasn't reoccurred. I think it was just because we were replacing two at existing locations, and, and they did what they could, but they weren't quite, transition wasn't quite short enough. So they will take care of those two, but they've done much better on all the rest thus far. The Garner Police Department, the step repairs, they, they did go out and finish that or substantially completed. We do have some areas that need to be touched up for cosmetic reasons. We plan to meet with the contractor to discuss those, and we are still working to obtain bids for looking at the bio-retention facilities in front, out in the Garner Police Department parking lot. Forty-four twenty-two Parkwood, that was one of the stormwater projects that council approved with the agreement with the private owner. We had a bid opening on that project last week, and we will be planning to bring that bid award to council at the next council meeting so that that project can move towards construction. And then on the D O T side, I forty and C five forty, both those projects continue to move along. I forty can, can, planned for completion in late two thousand and twenty-two, and N C five forty, both, all three sections between Apex and Garner completed, completion scheduled for two thousand and twenty-three. The New Bethel Church Bridge Project, that's one that we've talked about quite a bit. Its construction's around forty percent complete, it is running behind schedule, it has since the beginning. Started out with some utility issues, and, and D O T has recently pushed back the completion date to at least October of this year. The Rayner Road Bridge, which originally was slated, I believe, to be let this summer. It has been pushed back to October. And then U S four oh one widening between Old Stage and Mechanical Boulevard, that is slated for letting in November of this year. On the D O T's resurfacing contract, they recently completed Trial Road between U S four oh one and Garner Road. So one thing that we did, we worked with D O T to tweak their, their, they had, if you've been out there previously, they had a very wide, extra wide middle lane, and four standard lanes outside of the middle lane. What we did was we worked with them to change that and put in wider outside lanes to help with both transit access as well as bicycle accommodations, even though they're not going to be marked. And Trial Road all the way back to Cary has wide outside lanes, or I think the section that's currently nearing completion along the golf course is actually going to have striped bike lanes. But I think that's the only section in there that will have striped lanes since it's a forty-five mile an hour facility. But that at least provides some additional accommodations. The Greenfield Parkway is another one that is slated to be done this summer at the U S seventy interchange, and we've worked with D O T on that project as well to provide some bike sharos where there were no, no bike accommodations before to get from one side of the interchange to the other. So that one will be coming soon. And then they've got a couple other subdivisions slated for completion that are in our E T J, but outside the, the current town limits. All of those are supposed to be completed this year. I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Singleton, any questions?
Yes, sir. I always appreciate your support.
Yeah. Any, any on this end questions for Mr. Johnson? Okay. Yeah, and let me just sort of say personally, I appreciate your response sometimes. Obviously, my office will get an inquiry from somebody, and you, you certainly were prompt in responding to a, to a concern in, in a technical way that I could not have, so thank you, sir. Yep. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Manager, listen, we beg at you.
Correct. I had up there July third update, but I don't really have a big update. It's up to say that it went really well, and I just want to commend staff, all the staff that had a hand in that. It looked like we never even missed a beat there, and had a large crowd, I guess debatable the size of the crowd, but it was a very, very, very large crowd, and all the music and fireworks and everything turned out great, and the weather was great, and glad to have everybody, everybody was glad to be back together and having events again, so.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Just want to share some information with you. The Raleigh Chamber is sponsoring a state of city, county, and schools. It's on July the twenty-second, so if anyone would like to attend, please let the, let the clerk know, and we will get you registered. We'll send out an agenda tomorrow. It's, it's about a couple of hours presentation, various speakers, and we'll, we'll get that information to you. We have to R S V P by a certain time, so when we send out the agenda, if you could let us know as soon as possible, at least by no, no later than the end of this week, if you would like to attend that, we'll get you registered. We are monitoring the tropical storm. It looks like at this point, you know, it's going to bring a lot of rain to our area, potentially some localized flooding here and there. Wake County is not opening up the emergency operations center at this, at this point, but if it gets bad enough, they could do that on the fly. But it looks like, you know, there'll be some wind, but mainly going to be rain, the way it's tracking right now. And then, as was mentioned earlier during one of the presentations, Operation Coming Home that provides a house for a veteran that's returning from combat missions overseas. They're going to have a key, awarding the key on July the fifteenth at ten o'clock, and I think that's in the Royal Oak subdivision, I believe. And they would certainly love to have any council presence there if they could, so.
And just to quickly interject, yeah, the mayor's going to be out of town then, and we have, let's see, two, I believe, is that right? You have Mr. Vance and Mr. Matthews, who are going to represent us there at that, apparently. I don't know if it, well, I'll, I'll get, I'll go to that after he finishes, yeah, okay.
All right, that's all I have.
Okay. Attorney reports?
No report.
Okay. Counsel reports, start with Mr. Vance down here this time.
I'd like to say that I believe that the July third event was a success. I was happy to be out around people, enjoyed the fireworks and family as well. Good job to the, to the town staff.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Dellinger.
A quick note on the downtown Garner Association's Art Around Town. Our artists have started bringing in their work, so shout out to Public Works, that'll be helping us to put those up around downtown. And then just a question for town manager later, getting a little more information on the American Rescue Plan information, and what, start having a conversation about thoughts on how we want to utilize that, so.
Yep, okay, yep.
You probably told me last time, is the art display, is that imminent? I mean, is that happening?
Yep, it'll, they should be up first of August around that timeframe. So the artists were just turning in their stuff this week, last weekend, this week, so they look, some of them look pretty good, excited.
I'll be sure to get down there and take a look at them. Ms. Behringer.
I just repeat what the manager and, and council member Vance said about the July third celebration. It was just the most enjoyable one maybe that I've ever been to. Large crowd, but, but everybody seemed to be calm and enjoying themselves, and the music was good, both groups, the symphony, the, the group that played beforehand actually understood what they were singing, and so that was good. But just, just an outstanding job, and the traffic control that the police did, it was amazing. With all those cars that were there and the traffic coming in and out, and there were practically no delays either way, that was incredible. So my thanks to everybody involved, Public Works, everybody, it's awesome.
Thank you. Mr. Singleton?
Yes, I follow up, I sent an email to department heads and copied the council on it, thanking everybody for their work, we appreciate it. And as one of our former colleagues say, I will concur what has been said by the manager, by Mr. Vance, and Ms. Behringer.
All right, thank you. Mr. Matthews?
Pretty much, pretty much same thing, it's just great that Garner, that's kind of our way of opening up for business again, and I think everybody had a great time. And through the years of going out there, I think we had numbers like eighteen thousand one year, and one year's a little bit bummed. I tell you what, I think those numbers are going to come in pretty doggone close, time you factor it all in, because there won't much green area out there to sit, and seeing where all the cars were parked all the way down to the right, not counting what's on the sidewalks and, and the other areas. So it's a great job for the staff, man, on short notice, and it's great to pull it off in some other towns, couldn't quite do it.
Just a quick, curious question, who officially estimates the numbers, Mr. Manager, if you know?
Anyone you ask. The economic development number is eighteen thousand, I guess. Well.
You don't have to answer that.
No, I was going to say, in the past, we've had the benefit of having a drone and maybe getting a shot at a crowd, but this year, you know, not having that employee here, we were not able to get that, that helps us estimate it, but. I don't know, sometimes you can do it by the number of cars and estimate certain number of people per car, and then the walking pedestrians. But I don't know, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen thousand maybe.
We'll be having a debrief meeting with all the departments that were involved later, and typically we would get an impression from all of them and help formulate a number. So once we, once we have a chance to have that meeting, we can share that with the manager, so he can share it with you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Perhaps in my, in the email, people were amazed how many people, how many people are walking the sidewalks, whether it was Buffalo up down in Abbesboro, or Mr. Dellinger crossing where there wasn't a sidewalk, but we hope to have one one day. But they, they said, well, they're parking it, you know, they're coming down from Lotus Suze or Abbesboro Baptist Church or the school, wherever. They said, these people are walking, it was not a long walk, so once you cross, especially, once you cross Timber, it's pretty cut and dry. So they were just amazed how many people were walking on sidewalks.
And the shuttle was very well also.
Were widely used.
They were parking up in.
My front yard and all the way up in that area, then walking down that way over the bridge and up the hill, and, and they were parked all the way up there, and they do every year.
And I know it's.
I see you had a sign, this one, you're a twenty dollars per car.
Well, one of the things, I know they shut down.
Part of Buffalo, and there were a lot of people walking, so it actually helped a lot of those folks get to the park by even. lot of those folks get to the park by being able to walk down Buffalo.
Mayor wants to go on record that he walked to the park too, he and his wife, and...
She walked, yeah.
Okay, not expecting any kudos for that.
Good.
One thing I will mention, that you've all received an email of the Mayor's Association of Wake County Annual Allen Mudcats Game, so I think you're all aware of that, and deadline is this week if you intend to attend that, so need to let the town clerk know. Okay. All right, I believe that covers all of our regular agenda, and we have one closed session. Unless there's anything else, Mr. Beck, you don't have anything, do you? Okay, except you want to go home, I'm sure. Okay, and Mr. Johnson too. All right.
Pursuant to NC General Statute Section 1433-1811A3, to consult with the town attorney regarding litigation.
Is there a second? Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I will declare that we are going into closed session.
Mr. Mayor, whenever you're ready.
Okay, council is back in regular session, having gone into closed session to consult with the town attorney regarding litigation. Council received reports and information, but no formal action was requested or taken. I will entertain a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
I move.
Okay.
All right, all moved in second, if all in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Fairly this meeting formally closed, we'll see you at the next meeting. I know a couple of you don't, well, let's see, some of you know that...